We're live.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials will have the final vote on any of the issues that are before us tonight. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. And in this virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or to be seen on video by default. To maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has also been disabled. We will have public hearings on the items in front of us this evening. And speakers will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time in the meeting. So if you have pre-registered, your name is already on record. We'll call you when it's time for you to make your comments, just like we would at an in-person hearing. If you called in before the meeting started and staff was able to get your information, your name will also be called at the appropriate time and you're already noticed as a person, so we'll make your mic available to speak. You can also call in during this meeting tonight. You can dial 1-301-715-8592. Again, that's 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you'll need to wait until the particular public hearing you want to speak on is open. We'll go through the pre-registered folks and then I'll provide the opportunity for anyone else who hasn't signed up yet to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand and you can do that by pressing star nine on your phone. And then we'll call on you to speak. We ask that when you give your public comments, you start off by giving us your name and your mailing address and your home address and then you can make your public comments. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative. So if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is not favorable. Thank you again. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Good evening Chair and Planning Commissioners. Commissioner Amendoyah?
Here.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Baker? I see he's on the call. Can't hear him though. Circle back to Commissioner Baker. Chair Busby?
Here.
Commissioner Durkin?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
Present.
Commissioner Landfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner McIver?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
And I'm going back to Commissioner Baker.
Here. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you. We will move forward with the approval of the minutes and the consistency statement from the August 25th, 2020 meeting. And I know those were emailed to all of us about a week ago. Any adjustments to the minutes or consistency statements? I will note, Ms. Smith, the version we got by email, there were a bunch of placeholder notes in the minutes. That, I think they're just generic placeholder things. I don't know if that version is what is posted publicly online, but we should, I don't think we need to make any adjustments. I think we should just kind of clean that up before.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check that out. I'm sorry about that, I'm not sure what happened, but we'll definitely check into that.
Okay. And any, any other adjustments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve?
To Mr. Chair, when were these minutes set out? I've not seen these minutes. The final, any final minutes.
They were sent.
They were sent via email. I don't know, do you have the date, Chair Busby?
I'm, I'm looking right now. They were sent before our meeting last week.
Right, I think they were sent right before the meeting last week.
They were sent on the 14th.
That's right.
Alright, thank you. In that case, Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the minutes of our August 25th meeting along with the consistencies, consistency statements attached to those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Baker, and we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Amendoyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
Yes.
Commissioner Landfrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know of any adjustments to the agenda, Ms. Smith, any adjustments that we should know of?
No, we just don't need to forget about the new business item at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll give you your chance to let us know about properly noticing our hearings tonight. You're muted.
Yep, thank you for the reminder, sorry. Yes, so I would like to go on the record and state that all public hearings were noticed in accordance with state and local law and the affidavits for those are on file in the Planning Department.
Thank you. We have two zoning map change proposals in front of us this evening and we will start with the 4115 Angier Avenue case. And that is case Z190014. And we will start with the staff report.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Struthers with the Planning Department. I will now be presenting case Z1900014 and A1900007 for 4115 Angier Avenue. This case was previously heard at the June 2nd Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, a motion to recommend approval failed 1 to 12. The applicant has since made additional commitments and seeks to be reheared by the Planning Commission due to these revisions before moving forward to the Planning Commission. Sorry, before moving towards City Council. Revisions include design commitments as well as proffers to school and housing funds. The development plan attached to your staff packet is current. As a refresher, this case is located at 4115 Angier Avenue and includes three parcels totaling 20.35 acres. The applicant proposes to change the zoning from commercial general and residential suburban 20 to residential suburban multifamily with a development plan for maximum of 115 townhouses. The next slide shows an aerial as a reference of the location and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will open the public hearing or, I guess reopen the public hearing since this is returning to us even though it's an updated case. We have one proponent and one opponent that are signed up to speak in advance. So we'll just operate with our, our normal rules of procedure of 10 minutes per side. And the proponent is Nate Buehler and, and team, I assume?
That's correct. This is Nate Buehler speaking on behalf of the applicant Cambridge Properties. We do also have Patrick Biker with Morningstar Law. I believe he may be logged in under the same link that was provided to us here at Cambridge. So he is in the process of changing his name so that he can speak directly following my.
Thank you, I see his hand raised, so we'll have him ready to go.
Right. Again, Chairman Busby, members of Planning Commission. My name is Nate Buehler, speaking on behalf of the applicant Cambridge Properties. We have provided a slideshow to grace, I believe, if you could please pull up those slides. Once again, we, we came before you all first on, on June 2nd, 2020. I just wanted to give a brief reintroduction to Cambridge, our experience as well as kind of the history behind this project and where we are to date. Next slide, please. Cambridge Properties is a, a development group based in Charlotte, North Carolina. We've been around for roughly 30 years and have historically focused on delivering high-quality residential and then retail projects across the Charlotte and Raleigh-Durham metro areas. Next slide, please. Again, on speaking behalf of Cambridge and Morningstar Law Group, Patrick Biker as well. Next slide, please. Diving into a high level and backing up, we originally filed our initial zoning submittal for this project in early 2019. At which point, the initial filing was targeting a multifamily designation of 280 multifamily units. Based on neighborhood meetings and subsequent discussions with the surrounding residents. We amended that initial filing and refiled our zoning submittal for a maximum of 115 townhome units. Following that, holding subsequent neighborhood meetings, we received much more positive feedback from the surrounding residents. And based on our analysis of the market as well as the growth in that area, we felt this was a better use that was more in line with current growth trends. We have tried to take the feedback that you all provided to us in our June 2nd meeting related to architecture, design commitments and a few other elements and directly address that with our attempt to put forth to you all a, a stronger and better qualified plan that falls more in line with some of the feedback that we'd received. One of the concerns that was raised in that initial meeting related to our inability to make relative design commitments due to our unknown at the time builder partner on this project. We are pleased to be able to announce that we are working with Ashton Woods on this development project and based on their success at the nearby Ellis Crossing project. We feel very confident in their ability to deliver a high-quality project in this area. With, with that being said, I'll pass it off to Patrick Biker for additional comments. Thank you all.
Good evening Chairman Busby, Vice Chair Kinschen, members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you, members of the board for your time tonight. I, I want to follow up on the point about this being a townhouse project. I think it's a great location for townhouses because it is essentially an infill development and it's really a great location for townhouse neighborhood with young families because I personally went and investigated this and you can walk to Bethesda Elementary School in less than 10 minutes from the site that's before you on this map. Also want to talk about transit service at this site. Could I have the next slide, please, Chris? Thank you. As an infill development, I'm happy to point out that there is transit service through Go Durham Route 2 with a stop that's only about 1,000 feet from this site. My recollection from my time on the Durham Area Transit Authority Board of Trustees where I served from, or when I served from 1996 to 2004 is that we started bus service to connect Durham to the Briar Creek area of Raleigh. And so there is transit service from this proposed townhouse neighborhood to our downtown Durham station. Many employment locations along Miami Boulevard and Alexander Drive. And then over to the section of Briar Creek that's in the city limits of Durham. Beyond transit service, I want to emphasize for the Planning Commission, the concrete bus pullout and bus shelter that is a text commitment Cambridge has put forward. In my experience going back 25 years, that type of proffer for transit-related infrastructure is usually only comes with commercial or office developments. And so I hope Planning Commission will recognize that Cambridge is going the extra mile in this regard. Next slide, please. In addition to the changes we were prompted to incorporate from the neighborhood feedback, we also have made changes related to comments we got from the Planning Commission. Whereas the development plan previously was silent on these points, we have made proffers to avoid monotony by requiring offsets in the front facades of townhouse buildings with four or more units and also requiring a mixed color palette. Our comments, commitments also speak to architectural design features and materials requiring 20% brick or masonry on front elevations. The commitments also require townhouses ranging in size from 1,600 to 2,500 square feet. We have added conditions which speak to the design and connectivity of the community. The development will include a centrally located park of approximately 10,000 square feet and that will serve as an active open space area. In addition, there will be an undisturbed open space area of about four acres in size that will be maintained as a natural area amenity within this development. The internal street network also will be designed with a maximum block length of 500 linear feet to maximize inner, internal connectivity and walkability. Lastly, we've committed to make a, committed to making a contribution of $20,000 to the Durham Affordable Housing Fund and $2,500 to Durham Public Schools. As you can see, the project has come a long way from when the Planning Commission first voted on it back in June. Given the amount, given the amount of changes that have been made, we opted to come back to the Planning Commission voluntarily because we realized City Council has been sending cases back to you when such changes have occurred. You may have noticed in your agenda package that this 20-acre site is currently owned by Greater Life Christian Church. And it has been rewarding for me personally to get to know a couple of the church leaders during this process. Our Greater Life Christian Church started almost 25 years ago and they currently meet at 1,500 East Club Boulevard. Greater Life has owned this 20 acres for over five years and was strongly considering a new building at this location, but of course, the era of COVID-19 has caused many of us to reflect on how we as local churches should serve the entire community. And so now I'd like to turn it over to a, a couple of folks from Greater Life to share their thoughts on this proposal. I believe Ken Irvin is, is signed up to, or is logged in. And after that, Nate and I will be happy to answer any questions. We respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And if, Mr. Biker, if the individual who you said was planning to speak next can digitally raise their hand, they may be signed in as a, as one of the Nate Buehler lines as well. So if they can press star nine, there you go. We could, if we can unmute that individual and you are welcome to offer your comments as well, please. Are you able to speak?
Good evening Chair Busby and distinguished members of the commission. Actually, I think Pastor Spell wanted to first share some very inspirational comments with his, with his feelings regarding this project and I know he's logged on as well. So if we could unmute him, allow him to go ahead and address the board, that would be most appreciative.
We are happy to do that. I guess the same thing, if he can press star nine, okay. I see a second hand raised, well, Chris, if we can unmute the second hand as well, that would be appreciated.
They both have the ability to talk at the moment.
Wonderful, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you ever so much Chairman and distinguished board of commissioners. This is Pastor Mark Spell. I am very excited to have the opportunity to speak to you all. I am a graduate of North Carolina Central University, so I count myself not, not having been born and raised in Durham. But I'm certainly a Durhamite at heart. So we're excited about this project in that we, we had the idea and the focus at one point to build on this property. But at the end of the day, with the changes that have occurred as a result of the pandemic and other activities, we have sort of partnered with Cambridge with an idea that an opportunity for improved living conditions for several of our parishioners may be very well made possible by this, by this, by this project. So we are very excited about the opportunity to provide living alternatives for the greater community in that area. And so with that, I'm going to yield back over to King.
Thank you.
And yes, again, Commissioner and, and distinguished members of the board. Having the opportunity to be a part of this project and, and with continued discussions with our church board, we thought that this would be an amazing opportunity, especially with the, with the style and design that Cambridge has proposed. Because again, once, you know, starting out as a beginning homeowner, townhomes was, was my first home of choice. And we certainly can see the value add, especially it being right down at Miami Corridor. And it's something that we strongly support because we know that it provides great opportunities for many of the parishioners in our ministry.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Any, any additional comments from the proponents?
I think that's it for us Chairman Busby, but we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, yeah, we, we may, we may be back in touch once we close the public hearing. But, but appreciate that. And then I did mention there was one person signed up as an opponent and I will also just, this may be a good time as well to ask if you would like to speak on this item, if you want to digitally raise your hand now, so you can press star nine. And in the meantime, I will call on Vanessa Mason-Evans to speak. Ms. Evans?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see each and every one of you again this evening. I have been a part of the Bradtown Community Association, but I also have been connected with Benita Green and the concerns of what they've been having in their neighborhood. I'm hoping that through the development, they have really brought this through. I've heard a lot of them speaking of the parishioners. But I'm, I want to make sure that the community is also a part of what's being said and done. It's great to have development to come into communities, but when there's no connections, there's questions that should be answered. I want to see development done, but I want the development to be done right. And at the right time, not, not over, overburdening the people of the community and not hearing their voices. I don't want to be, I don't want to speak for this community. I thought more people would be on the call. But far as I'm concerned, I feel that we need to make sure that the residents have had their voices heard. Make sure that the spaces that are being built on, I know they spoke about being a bus space within that area, but I think there should be just more than one bus area. When you're developing an area, it should be enough bus spaces within that where people can catch the buses from different angles of that development. I don't know, I didn't hear anything about affordable housing either. So my concern is, are there in affordable housing? And I just want to make sure that everybody's voices being heard, not just the developers and the church members who have spoken tonight. I'm going to stop right there.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. If anyone else would like to speak, I haven't seen any other hands, but again, I'll give a moment. You can press star nine, you can visually raise your hand and we will give you the opportunity. I don't see anyone else, so I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, this is your opportunity to ask questions or make comments. So if you want to digitally or virtually raise your hand, I will call on you. Commissioner Durkin?
I just wanted to touch on the last point that Ms. Evans made about affordability and if that applicant can please speak to the price points, I'm assuming the townhomes are for sale rather than for rent? And also whether they considered using the Affordable Housing Development? I think I asked this the last time and that answer was no. I'd just like to point out that a $20,000 donation to the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund doesn't build even one affordable unit. Thanks.
Sure, this is Nate Buehler, speaking on behalf of the applicant Cambridge Properties. Appreciate your, your point as well as the, the point of the, the previous speaker regarding affordable housing. One of the things that we've been working to address from our initial submittal with you all related to the comments of the Planning Commission surrounding both the development quality as well as mixing those with affordability. And one of the ways that we've worked to address that in working through comments with staff as well as with our builder Ashton Woods is, is working to put forth a high-quality architectural building product, but also one that enters at a price point that going off of what Ken Irvin said, enters the market at a level that the first-time home buyer can begin to build equity in their home. Which is in kind of the $250,000 range and I, I spoke to that previously, I believe, on our initial submittal at June 2nd. So working with those two elements together, that's, that's the way we've tried to work to address some of the concerns around affordability. Another is around capping our max townhome unit size and providing for a variety of unit sizes that can provide for price points across the spectrum that I referenced. Coupling those two elements together with our commitment of $20,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, our hope was that in working through that process, we could put forth both a high-quality product that provides for a sense of affordability, given the market.
Yeah. It's all, Chairman Busby, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, it's also important to recognize that we capped the number of townhouses at, at 115 and that was again because of the communications with the neighborhood. For those of you who remember, this was the old Bethesda neighborhood, which was quite an annexation battle. Golly, when was it, 30 years ago? And so we've done a lot of outreach for the neighborhood and, and that's why none of the, there, there's a, there are very nice homes right, right here, right adjacent to the site here across Angier Avenue, but because those folks are comfortable with the proposal before each night, none of them have joined this and that is because we've agreed to cap the number of units at 115. And so that, that, you know, I think what Nate's, Nate's points were spot on. But you have to recognize that 115 units is a, is a, is a fairly small development. And so in order to make the neighborhood comfortable, that's the, I think the best way to balance the needs for affordability with neighborhood acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Durkin, the floor is yours if you have additional questions or comments.
No, I just wanted to point out that 250 is, you know, not nothing. And looking the benefit or curse of doing these virtual meetings is that I have Google very easily accessible to me. And so I looked up Ashton Woods and their product does not include a whole lot of affordable options. So I, I just wanted to make clear for the record that saying a price point tonight does not mean that that's what the applicant is beholden to. And, and I'm not suggesting that you need to put a price point on as a commitment. I think that's a little premature since you just don't know what the market's going to do, but I just wanted to make that clear that you're really not committing to a lower number.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So I just wanted to say that there's a lot about this project that I like a lot better this time than last time. And I wanted to thank the developers for paying attention to the comments that they heard from the commission members. I objected to this project last time because it was an essentially blank development plan and now we have one that has a great many things that I look for in land design for projects like this. I note that it's a fairly small parcel, it's just 20 acres. The density is coming in at around five and a half units an acre. Appropriate for the suburban location. I'm impressed that there is a developed open space, a 10,000 square foot park in the middle. That means a lot to me because I think that's an element of good design that should be present in all suburban residential projects. And I'm glad to see it expressly committed to here. I also like that there will be a mix of materials, if these, this will not be a collection of 115 townhouses covered with gray vinyl siding. I want to get past that. I, there's still some things about this that I'm not wild about. I'm not a big fan of vinyl siding. And however, for some projects, it is appropriate. I also wish there were commitments present in this development plan that would create facade, front facades that were engaging on a human level. And I suspect that what we're going to have here are what are called snouthouses in the planning community. Automobile-dominated architecture with the principal element at the ground level are going to be garage doors. I do note though, that the townhouses will be a mix of sizes and widths. I think that's at least some relief and that. I think that's at least some relief and that the developer has made a commitment at least to vary the, the styles of the garage doors. But I'm reminded, we had a project not so very long ago. It's the one I made my disclosure about where it's essentially an 11-acre piece of property with 85 townhouse-style units, where there was a commitment to mix up front-loaded and back-loaded garages. So it is possible to do this. And I, I, I mean, this would be a slam dunk for me if that, if that had been there. But it's, it's not. And so I'm, I am going back and forth and I hope other commission members will chime in. With regard to this project, I'm open to persuasion. But right now, I think because of the changes that the developers offered, I am bending towards voting for this, where I was bending very strongly against it last time.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And we've got a few more commissioners with their hands raised. So you have an opportunity to, to listen, listen closely. Commissioner Williams is next.
Yes, thank you, Chair Busby. I too echo the concerns of Commissioner Durkin in terms of affordability and the drop in the bucket, if you will, for affordable housing with the donation of $20,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund. With the price point being set at $250,000 and you're looking at 250,000, I think you said 115 units. You're looking at netting $28,750,000 with a donation of not even 10% of that to the Affordable Housing Fund. I find that concerning. $250,000 is definitely a lot of money. And I do understand that this is backed by a church and that they are involved in the planning and they are encouraging this to assist the parishioners. And I want to first and foremost say congratulations to the church who can have parishioners who can afford a $250,000 townhome. Most people can't do that, especially in these difficult times. I have extreme concerns about this development in this location, given the heavily traveled area. Even with COVID-19 being very active, Andrew Avenue is essentially a two-lane road and without many points of access, it's going to be a major strain in and out of that particular townhome, not to mention the intersection, which is extremely busy with commercial traffic. Also persons who access, access Andrew Avenue, coming in and out of Durham, traveling to Highway 70, the subdivisions, as well as the apartment complexes that butt up against it, Chin Page Road and Page Road access. I have extreme concerns about the amount of traffic generated. Not thoroughly impressed with the traffic impact analysis because that doesn't account for the fact that people will live their lives there. They will have visitors. They will have different things that go on. Buses that travel in that area, Bethesda Elementary School is a hop, skip and a jump away from this particular intersection where it's nearest. There's a water tower right there. So there, I have a lot of concerns about this. The architectural commitments that were input for this particular decision are great. It'll break up some of the monotony, but architectural commitments don't really help me in terms of speaking on behalf of the community and what that impact is going to look like with school-aged children, elementary school-aged children. Not to mention the numerous number of developments in townhomes that are also in this area off of Ellis Road, which is still yet, and again, a hop, skip and a jump away from this development and this proposed site. Though it will fit and other things could possibly take place in this area, commercial-wise, not just real estate, I think that at 115 units and the, the proposed sites, the number of trips, the activity on this road, the lack of infrastructure that is present in order to support the amount of traffic on Andrew, regardless of direction, turning in and out of this particular intersection. I think that there's a lot of cause for concern throughout that, that area. Yes, there is a bus line that is already there that will be provided and it will be upgraded. But I would be very interested to see what the trips look like for people actually taking mass transit in that area as frequently as I've traveled it. I can't say that I actually see a go Durham bus that frequently in that particular area. And even with the bus stop being there and it's being upgraded, how will that impact traffic since Andrew is a two-lane road? All of these things that I have to consider. And my greatest concern is how heavily congested that area is, especially once school comes back in. That is a massive strain. There's definitely more than enough to eat and drink in that area. It is relatively close to Briar Creek. If you're going to take mass transit, you're going to have to come out of there, make that right turn on Miami Boulevard to catch that light. Because if you're going to ride Andrew all the way out until 70, it's going to take some strong maneuvering to be able to get through there to get to Briar Creek, to get to the Walmart. And as far as I know, that is the closest grocery store in that area that will serve that particular community. So I definitely have some concerns. As it sits outside of architectural commitments, I don't see the promise of this particular community being placed where it is. I see more of a strain than I see anything else.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Landfrey?
Thank you. I'll start by saying I really appreciate the inclusion of the bus stop amenity. I think that's a really important use of space here and I appreciate the developer taking that step. I, I think that's great. I have a couple of concerns I'd like to raise. One is that it was mentioned that the site, it's walkable to Bethesda Elementary. And it's true that it's quite close geographically, but to make that trip, you'd have to cross on foot at the intersection of Miami Boulevard and Andrew. And there's no crosswalk at that intersection where that crossing would have to be done. It's an extremely scary place to cross on foot. I think it might be five lanes there. And as was mentioned, it's heavily, heavily trafficked. I would not feel safe walking that route with my child. So I just want to flag that as a barrier to the walkability that was mentioned before. And also since this is, you know, in large part an undeveloped parcel, I'm not seeing any commitments to preservation of tree canopy. And that's an element that would be important to me, both from a quality of life perspective and from an environmental perspective. So those are my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Landfrey. And Commissioner Landfrey, any, do you have any specific questions? Or you just wanted to flag some of the concerns that you have?
Um, I, I'd, you know, appreciate hearing the developers' perspective on those issues if there's anything to add, but just wanted to flag the concerns mainly.
Great, thank you. I, I will allow the, the proponents, if you would like to address the concerns that Commissioner Landfrey has brought up, you're welcome to do so.
If I may, Chairman Busby, Commissioner Landfrey, Commissioner Landfrey, it's not necessary to cross Miami Boulevard to walk from this site to Bethesda Elementary. You can cut through the neighborhood on very quiet streets. I believe one of them is called Thomas. And then you're on a sidewalk all the way to Bethesda Elementary. So if I were walking my son back in the day to the school, I would have had no problems with it. He used to walk to Rogers Hur from our house in Rockwood Park. And it was, it's an easier walk than we had from our house to Rogers Hur. So I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding about that. I certainly would not have brought it up if, if it was necessary to cross a five-lane road.
Understood. Yeah, that, and that's, that's helpful. Thank you. I didn't see that, that Thomas Street option. And would again though, say, you know, a safe crosswalk would help alleviate my concerns there. And the walkability in general of the neighborhood is still impacted by the extremely busy crosswalk-free intersection at Miami and Andrew. But thank you for that clarification. I, I did not see that.
And, and this is Nate Bueller, speaking on behalf of the applicant as well, Cambridge Properties. Did want to address and kind of go off of what Patrick just referenced, as well as Commissioner Williams' previous statements regarding the congestion at the Miami and Andrew intersection. I, I will of note, mention the, the planned NCDOT improvements. And while those are currently on hold, they are intending to make the intersection of Miami and US 70 into a closed-access interchange as a goal of trying to improve the severe congestion issues that are currently present there today. And while the timetable of that is currently unknown, there are plans in place to do that, to address the very concerns that you referenced. So our, our feeling coupled with the off-site improvements we have committed is that those will help to address some of those congestion concerns that are related to our project, especially given the fact that we are downgrading the land use from commercial to low-medium density residential, and which in and of itself has a lower trip generation. We feel confident from our perspective that those commitments have been well-positioned to address those concerns. Regarding tree coverage, on your other point, I, I will refer you to sheet C2 on our development plan for our commitments regarding tree preservation and replacement of 4.68 acres.
Commissioner Landfrey, any, any final comments before we move to other commissioners?
Um, no, that's fine. I'm just pulling up that sheet. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we can come back to you if you get a good look at that and have any follow-up questions.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman Busby. And so I'll start by, as my colleagues have thanked, thanked the developer firstly for actually providing us more information and feedback to make more informed and insightful deliberations regarding what we were initially presented with. And secondly, I want to, I want to, to ping on to comments that Commissioner Miller stated in regards to certain aspects of what's been presented to us this evening that actually is, is an improvement from where we started. But, and so it, I don't want my comments to sound as if I'm working towards a no because leadership, in my opinion, is, is working to get to a yes. But I think that what we have experienced and what we have acknowledged from this COVID-19 experience is that quality of life at the local level is, is very important. And so that leads me to highlight comments that Commissioner Williams have made in regards to the reality of, of this area as it is now. And yes, the, the proposal presented tonight has been tweaked to attempt to mitigate or minimize some of the incremental impacts that will be added to what is already there. It's the question of, what is the overall quality of life like regardless in this area? And I think the transportation and congestion, even the applicant has, you know, acknowledged that congestion is an issue. We understand it's part of the transportation plan here in Durham, but we don't know when it's going to happen. And so it's the question of like, are we, is now the time? Commissioner Baker has said before, you know, it's not that you're anti-development. It's like, but is this the time for particular developments to come to particular areas of Durham? And so that is something that I, I think that, you know, I'm more on the fence now. I was against it initially, but as I'm considering it now, as thinking through, it's like, well, well, yes, this, the changes that have been proposed minimize this potential impacts that the new development would bring to that project, but it's still adding incremental impacts to the overall area, right? And so again, it's a question of here in Durham, it's like, how are we planning to address what's already here? But at the same time, we're adding more pieces to the puzzle. So I think that's something that, you know, continues to have me kind of going back and forth regarding, do you, do you go year and nail these things here? The one, the one question I do have is for either the applicant and/or the, the church leadership. The gentleman's name escapes me. The church is, it stated that it is in support of this project and the developer has noted that a price point of around $250,000. And so my question is, is there a partnership or anything in place between the developer and the church to ensure that parishioners of that church would actually be able to secure, like financing to actually participate in some of these units? So that's one question. And then the, the second component question is, and we've asked this before, and it goes to Commissioner Durkin's point about affordable housing. I don't expect every project to come before us to solve the affordable housing, the workforce housing in Durham. But how did you come to, is it $20,000 contribution towards the, the Affordable Housing Fund? It's like, what was the rationale? And you've spoken to it briefly, but I'm just curious as to understanding that this project is not addressing affordable housing in, in any direct capacity. It's like, what was the rationale to get into the $20,000 figure that was proffered?
Thanks, Commissioner Johnson. Mr. Bueller, Mr. Baker, or anyone who spoke, if, if you're willing to answer Commissioner Johnson's two specific questions, that would be appreciated. The first is about the, the church and then the second is about the decision around the amount proffered on affordable housing.
Sure. This is Nate Bueller. In, in regards to the relationship we've developed with Greater Life Church over the last year and a half to two years with trying to get this project to where it is before you today, it's been a, a very involved relationship. We've worked closely with the members of the church and the church board to try to put forth a project that represents some of their goals for the area and goals for this area of Durham. While we do not have a formal partnership in place in reference to the comment that was made, we have made it a focus of ourselves to work closely with the church in trying to deliver an end product that's consistent with their goals and their views for how this area of Durham should be developed. Following up on that in regards to the commitment for affordable housing, we've spent quite a bit of time trying to reconcile the comments made in regards to architectural quality and those made in regards to affordable housing and trying to put forth a project that addresses both of those concerns. And based on working through that prod, that process and kind of where we are today, we came to the value that you see before you. I, I would like to, to make a note that while I don't have a specific figure, figure for you, one of the things that we are seeing across the triangle and across the Charlotte metro area as well, more and more in these townhome communities, are larger investment groups or other investors purchasing blocks of townhomes for future for-rent product to try to address some of the purchase versus renter profile concern that was raised in previous comments. So that is something I will just leave you with in addressing those previous two comments.
Could I just one thing, Chairman Busby?
Yes, please. If it's, if it's focused on these two questions, please.
Yeah, it is. It, it applies to the $20,000 for affordable housing. The, the, I, I referenced the concrete bus pullout and the bus shelter. That's an undertaking that is, I haven't priced it out lately for a, a client or a project, project, but that's an infrastructure amenity that would cost well over $20,000, I think. So when you look at what this project's doing in terms of transit and affordability, you have to, it's sort of two sides of the same coin. So that, that's an important infrastructure commitment that has a, a significant price tag. So I want to highlight that in addition to the, since Commissioner Williams brought up the $20,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, any additional questions?
Yes, one, one question, one follow-up question. I guess this would be for transfer to someone from staff or whatnot in regards to the bus pad. Is, is this more of a build it and they will come type proffer in the sense that if you build a bus pad, which allows the bus stop to happen, does the bus planning system automatically plugs into the bus pad so that now it will be a pickup spot? Or is it just now an option that the city has that will now have to be planned into the, the transportation planning, you know, the scheduling system?
Erling Thomas Transportation. So what will likely occur is the existing bus stop that's located just west of the site, closer to the intersection, will likely be relocated to this site and the shelter and pad would be moved. The bus stop itself would be relocated to this site. So there is an existing bus stop just west of this site with service currently being provided.
And, and so the, the people who are currently utilizing that stop would just basically have to locate, walk or get to the, this new one here that would be here for this.
Correct. Correct.
Got you. Okay.
That is, will more than likely happen.
And that, that's all from me, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Baker?
Just a few, uh, brief thoughts and thinking about what my colleagues have been saying and juggling. When this came to us the first time, I was very against it. Now I'm on the fence, sort of leaning towards, uh, voting for it. They added some, uh, commitments that are interesting to me that are, that, um, make the development better, the connectivity, the limited architectural, um, commitments, um, a couple of other things. Also note that when I started on the commission, this development wouldn't have needed to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Now it will. Uh, this, this development would have needed to have, uh, street trees every forty feet. Uh, now it will. Um, and so, you know, just as we add new standards that are just going to be required of everyone, you know, these proposals just automatically become ever so slightly better. Um, and I also understand some of the angst. Um, I mean, if you are looking at this site and you zoom out, it's a challenging site. You've got, you've got, uh, some, some pretty, pretty challenging issues going on the northwest and, and south of the site. With the limited access road and, and some sort of industrial type uses. And then if you zoom further out, I mean, it's just a hodgepodge of development out there. Um, I mean, it's hard to even know what's going on. Um, and so, you know, when we're, when we as a planning commissioner are limited to looking at a, at an individual site, you know, how do you, how do you find reason when in a, in an area, an entire region that just has no reason? So I, I understand that angst and it's always a hard thing to balance. Um, I also just want to bring up, you know, a couple of folks have talked about this, but affordable housing, um, and exactions, you know, in the context of exactions and the context of impact fees. You know, the fact that there are limitations because of North Carolina being a Dillon's rule and, and some of these things being precluded, some of these things being legally ambiguous. And we just need developers to step up and, and, and do the right thing. And twenty thousand dollars can renovate a bathroom and we need affordable housing in this city. Um, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't, isn't affordable housing. It's a decent price point, but, but it isn't affordable housing. And so we need, um, we need developers who are, who are willing to, to do the right thing here. And we've, we've had commitments before of permanent affordable housing onsite. When you look to other communities, uh, they, with mandatory inclusionary zoning ordinances, you know, ten percent, ten percent of units are, are required to be affordable to eighty percent AMI in, in other communities. And so, you know, we're limited to just being able to ask for these things, but, but we should, we should ask as much as, as we possibly can. So, um, again, uh, some, some good improvements. Could be better. Uh, there's some limitations to this site that make it difficult. And so, um, all in all, I am on the fence leaning towards voting for this project. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Morgan, you haven't spoken yet and you have your hand raised. I'd like to recognize you.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Um, I wanted to kind of, uh, ask transportation, what are the, is there any plans for doing anything with Angier Avenue, Avenue at all? In the future, I know we talked about DOT type activity on US seventy and Miami, but what is, uh, is there anything being planned for that?
Earl and Tom Transportation. Um, there are currently no projects on the long range transportation plan along, on this section of Angier Avenue.
Okay, thank you. I, I think there's a couple of concerns. I know Commissioner Williams brought up the fact of transportation on Angier. I definitely know, I, I actually, even when we weren't virtual, I traveled Angier on my way home. Coming out of the city and Ellis is actually a cut through and Angier is a way to get back on seventy, coming back to my home in East Durham. So very familiar with the traffic issues and I know that the traffic light does back up at, on Miami. So there is concerns where there may need to be some kind of, uh, relief there. I do think with the future plans of eight eighty-five getting finished and seventy and, and that which would be probably three, four years or so finally. When some of that may relieve some of that pressure, but I do see that that could be an issue. So I was for this before I was the lone person for it, but I do think it's a good area to develop. And there is some things that are, are interesting. And I think certainly with some of the changes that the developer has made. I'm kind of leaning towards that again, even further, but just that it is a good location for that. The only issues are transportation and infrastructure around it.
Thanks, Commissioner Morgan. Before I circle back to commissioners who have already spoken, I just want to see if any other commissioners who have not spoken yet would like to speak. And, um, and then I have a, a couple of questions and a comment as well before we circle around. Vice Chair Kenshin?
Chair, I, I actually was with Commissioner Morgan the last time until Commissioner Williams kind of talked about some of the traffic issues that I hadn't thought of. Um, you know, my only concern about this project is Angier Avenue and traffic. I do think it's a good development plan and I do appreciate and applaud the developer for making the changes. And I think I'm going to vote yes, because I think as Commissioner Morgan said, there will be some improvements down the line. You know, two, three years out, I think it's going to ease some pressure on Angier Avenue. I just want to see a part of Durham is just underdeveloped to be developed in a, in a really positive way. I think it can lead to some good things. So I'm going to, I'm going to probably vote yes. Uh, I was on the fence last time too, until I heard from Commissioner Williams, but I think having said that, I think, um, just take a step of faith and hope that things will get better on Angier Avenue. And I think that this development might be the catalyst for making that happen.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kenshin. Uh, Commissioner Miller, before I circle back to you, I did want to just echo a lot of what, what all of you have said. I really appreciate that you proactively and voluntarily brought this back to the planning commission. I think it's great to, for us to see this updated plan. There's a lot of good in here. And, um, and so there, there, there's a lot to applaud. The, I did have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Bueller and or Mr. Biker. I, I know my first question is you had mentioned the, the input from the neighborhood about the number of units. Were there additional things that you were hearing from the community? And could you, could you include telling us the engagement with the community since we saw this in June until today?
Sure. This is Nate Bueller. Backing up as I alluded to, our, our initial neighborhood meeting that was held for this project was centered around our initial submittal, which was for up to three hundred and twenty apartment units. And the concerns that were raised at that point related to the intensity of the development, uh, the number of stories constructed as well as the traffic that we would be produced as a result of that kind of intensity and number of units. Kind of centering around some of the comments that you all previously made. Going back and, and working to address the comments, um, one of the things that we, we did, as I referenced, was reconfigure a development from multifamily of three hundred and twenty units to up to a hundred and fifteen townhome units. And in doing that, that A, decrease the intensity of development and B, help to mitigate some of the additional trips that would have been created as a result of the higher intensity multifamily project. So we, we felt like that was a, a, a good way in which to address the concerns that the neighbors raised. And we've tried our, our best to work closely with them. Um, in terms of coordination, since our, our June second meeting, we have been in very close connection with the church as well as the other underlying property owner that we're working with here, who have been in the area for the last eighty years. Um, they have good relationships with the surrounding neighbors as well and have attended both of our neighborhood meetings. So in working to address some of those concerns, we've continued to keep them abreast of these updates. Um, and during both of our neighborhood meetings, we did provide our contact information to reference any additional questions that might have been raised by neighbors.
Thank you. And my, my other question, and this is a follow up to Commissioner Lanfre's question. She, she was asking about the, the tree save and you referenced that it was noted on the C two document. That's the, the updated development plan. And am I reading it correctly? It's very, very small print, but it talks about what's required and then what's provided. And am I correct in reading that what you're providing is, is the, is, is the basic level of what is required? Or are you going above and beyond the requirement?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, and I, I'll just say, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I, I will, I have one final, final question, but I just want to say I'm in the same boat as many commissioners. Much improved. I still have a, a few concerns. I will say from my perspective, the two things that stand out to me that I believe you have direct control over that I think could be stronger. And we've seen stronger things from other recent developments, which we have unanimously, unanimously voted down. Even though they had provisions that I thought were quite strong, the amount of tree save, we've seen proposals come in higher than the, the required amount. And we've seen much higher proffers on the affordable housing, uh, which is one of, one, if not the most important issue in our community. And so, uh, I will just note that those are two things that I think could be stronger. And, uh, and that's my final question is, I, I think we're about at the point where we're going to vote and I think there's a bunch of us on the fence. Is there just any final, uh, closing statement or things you would like us to consider before we, we move to vote? Uh, that's for Mr. Bueller or Mr. Biker. And then, and then I think we'll, uh, I'll call on Commissioner Miller and then we'll, we'll, we'll vote on this item.
Sure. This is Nate Bueller. Um, again, I, I appreciate those comments and just to kind of come full circle, uh, one of the things that we've done our, our best to do throughout this process from June second to today is try to address as well as reconcile what in some ways can be opposing comments in regards to architectural quality and affordability. And try to present before you a, a development proposal that addresses both of those in the most comprehensive way we, we were able to, to figure out in our, in our experience over the last thirty years. So, so that being said, we, we feel like we've put before, put forth before you all, uh, a presentation and a project that addresses those concerns and the, the way that we found was most appropriate. From an affordability standpoint, we feel like we've put forth a, a price point and a product that can help the first time home buyer, help them build equity in a home while still providing commitments towards the Affordable Housing Fund as well as providing for some of the current trends that we're seeing in the marketplace, as I alluded to, um, in regards to for rent townhome product that we are seeing across many of these projects that we do develop. As well as a bus stop. Um, so again, I, I appreciate your time and your consideration. Um, and thank you all.
Great. Thank you. Uh, but to be clear, no additional proffers or adjustments to, to the proposal in front of us this evening?
Right.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask Mr. Bueller about something he said that is something that has worried me all along. Um, did I understand that you said that phenomenon that you're observing in the markets, uh, where you're active is, is that it's that when you, when a developer creates, uh, uh, units with lower price points, that it's, it's possible to see investors coming in and essentially buying blocks of units, uh, for rental investment purposes? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
We, that, that's correct. We are seeing that in, in some areas. And, and one of the things that we're seeing is, you know, whether it be a, a ten percent or however small percentage of those units are often seen as becoming for rent, which we've seen in our experience as a positive in that it provides an alternative to a for purchase product, um, while still providing access to the neighborhoods that are being developed. And again, there, there's no general statement in terms of the exact number, but that's just the trend that we've seen. We've also seen a trend in, in some markets for, for none of that, as well as developments entirely consistent of for rent product, which would not be what this development would be. But just to generally speak to your point.
Thank you. Uh, and so I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman and, uh, other members of, of the commission, I find that alarming. And it tends to prove the point is, uh, if I understand it correctly, the median price point or at least listing price point for a house in Durham right now is around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. These units, uh, at least the, the smaller ones are going to start at two fifty, which is below that. But, uh, the, the, the thing which I think is good because, uh, and I may be alone in this, uh, we have an affordable housing pri- problem, but that's not the problem. It's a symptom of the real problem is we have a wealth gap problem. And in Durham, the wealth gap problem, uh, has a strong racial correlation, which is deeply troubling. But it, it proves to me that the affordable housing, uh, that uh, for the most part is on the ground. New housing is almost never affordable. It's a capitalist system. We build new housing to make profit. And, uh, so all of these things have to be taken into account. When we create, when we change the zoning code to create opportunities, uh, for development and redevelopment, it is the people who have capital who are nimble enough out there to exploit it for profit purposes. The, uh, or individuals and organizations who just barely have enough money are almost never able to move fast enough to take advantage of opportunities we create by relaxation of the code. And this is a deeply troubling thing to me. Uh, we, we're not getting, uh, what we're after when, uh, when we, uh, relax the zoning code. And I would like to see us be much more thoughtful and say, here's a place where the community is working and for the most part it's affordable and, and protect those with stiffer regulations. While we might in other areas encourage new development and, and shape how the community functions as a whole in the marketplace, to the extent that we can do that with zoning regulations in North Carolina in a way that I don't think we're being, uh, as thoughtful about as we could be. Uh, I do find it alarming, uh, that investors will come in, they will not be buying up units to rent them at affordable rates. They will be buying them to rent them at as much as the market will bear because that's the way markets perform. If this project could mix up its, make its street facades more human friendly, more pedestrian friendly, this would be a slam dunk for me. That doesn't mean that it's got everything I want, but that would certainly tip it for me. But all in all, when I look at the, what I call this, this Bethesda corner, and a twenty acre project with a hundred and fifteen townhouse units, uh, in, in my opinion, is not a bad way to go. Uh, and so I'm going to vote for this, this time, but I will, uh, state here, as I've stated to the developers when I've met with them, uh, and also, uh, I will state it again in my comments. This is not, uh, a close to perfect project, uh, for me, and I'm not looking for perfection. It could be better. And I believe that as Nate said, we are getting incremental changes in, uh, in, uh, design standards that will make, uh, what I am now, as I'm closing out my, my, uh, commission service, a better understanding of sustainable development and a developing understanding of what equity and development looks like. There's a lot for me to learn, maybe for everyone else's, uh, as well. But on balance, I'm going to vote for this one. Uh, I wish it was just incrementally better to make me really feel good about it. But I do think that this housing in this place as a component of the larger development scheme in this Angier Miami, uh, intersection is not a bad thing to have. And so it's got my support and I hope you'll vote for it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Lowe, I saw you had your hand raised earlier. I want to give you the opportunity to speak if you are interested. If it was inadvertent, that's okay as well.
Thank you, Chairman Busby. Um, I just want to make an, an observation or, or comment. I agree that this plan is not perfect. There's some things there that we would like to see more of. But one thing I want us to take notice of that hopefully not get lost in the shuffle tonight. And for me, I think I only heard from one opponent of this plan. And, and that, that's rather impressive to me because usually we have a mass of opponents. But tonight we only heard one and, and, and that for me is a, is a good sign that, uh, that's going to push me to vote yes for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lowe. I was actually going to note the same thing in my closing comment. I, I wish there was a little more here. And if neighbors had come to say they had concerns, I would vote no, just because I believe we are just clearing my bar. But it is going to clear my bar tonight without the, without the neighborhood. If, if you've worked to assure them and give them confidence in the project and you've made significant changes. And we've raised the bar for what the U D O requires. I'm going to vote yes as well. And seeing no other commissioners looking to make questions or comments, I will ask for a motion for, for approval.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, in connection with case A 19 00007, and this is the plan amendment case component of this, I move that we send this forward to, I believe it's the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Seconded.
Commissioner Miller, do we actually need to vote on that or are we just voting on the zoning map change?
Well, that's a good question because it's, it's depicted in, in, in one way on the agenda, but when I look at the staff report, it has a plan amendment and
Yeah.
But it may be that this is the case where we voted for the plan amendments and against the zoning case last time. Is that right, Grace? Well, it won't hurt to vote for the plan amendment twice. Oh wait, the developer did not take it to council. That's right.
That's right.
We need to vote for both.
Whatever got left off the agenda, that was an oversight, but yes, vote for both, please.
All right. Well, okay. Very good. So my motion stands, Mr. Chair.
It does. Do we have a second on the motion?
Seconded.
Commissioner Morgan. So yeah, moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, and we will have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Amendolia?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Bus, excuse me, Chair Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kinchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Landfried?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay. So it's on the plan amendment. It was actually, one, two, three, one, two. Yeah. So it passes seven to five.
Thank you. And Commissioner Miller, the floor is yours to make the motion on the zoning case, please.
I will, Mr. Chairman. In connection with cases E 19 00014, concerning the property at 4115 Anger Avenue, I move that we send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Morgan and the roll call vote.
Commissioner Amendolia?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kinchen?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Landfried?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
No.
Just the same, passes seven, five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the mix up.
No problem. We will move to the, our, our next case, our final case this evening. This is 2720 Fawcett Avenue. This was, this case Z 19 triple zero two one. This was continued from our July 21st meeting. And we'll start with a staff report or any update to the report.
Good evening. Emily Stoudamire with the Planning Department again. This case was previously heard at the July 21st Planning Commission meeting, where the case was continued. Since that time, the development plan has been revised with numerous additional commitments. These are included in the development plan attachment of your packet. The applicant has also identified an additional commitment regarding stormwater control, which staff has vetted and finds acceptable. Next slide, please. As, oh, next slide. As a refresher, this case is located at 2720 Fawcett Avenue, 1035 Junction Road and 2509 Cheek Road. It includes three parcels totaling 101, sorry, 101.311 acres. The applicant proposes to change the zoning from residential world to planned development residential 3.159 for a maximum of 320 single family and townhouse residential units. The unit mix will include a minimum of 60 townhouse units and a maximum of 124 townhouse units. The proposal on that slide is from the previous, so please refer to the development plan for the most current description of that townhouse breakdown. Staff is available for any questions. The next slide will show an aerial just as a refresher. Thank you.
Thank you. We will reopen the public hearing. And we have four individuals who are proponents who were signed up to speak. And then in advance, we had 17 individuals who have signed up as opponents. And so if it, if it makes sense to commissioners, I would propose that we give each speaker three minutes of time and the proponents can then make their case and then we can move to any additional speakers. Does, does that sound good to everybody? Okay. Thank you. So we will, signed up to speak in support, we have James Chandler, Tim Seivers, Danielle Weaver and Nate Baughwin. And Mr. Seivers, I believe your plan is that you, you will make the presentation on behalf of the proponents using the allotted time. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. The other proponents are available for questions as needed.
Thank you.
Can I have the PowerPoint be brought up, please? Good evening, Chair Busby, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tim Seivers with Horvath Associates, 16 Consultant Place, Durham, North Carolina. I do want to thank the Planning Commission for approving our deferral request on July 21st. Since that date, I've held multiple small group meetings with different neighborhood groups to ensure their voices are heard. And we've provided over 15 additional text and graphic commitments based on that neighborhood input, which is included in your packet this evening. I'd also like to reach out and thank Shay Bullock for taking the time to meet with some of the neighbors and myself to assist in providing some incredible stormwater commitments that I'm happy to share with you this evening. This additional time has also allowed our team to meet with different home builders like KB Homes and Taylor Morrison, who is now contracted to develop the project. Next slide, please. The request in front of you this evening includes two applications, a rezoning of just over 101 acres and an annexation of over 36 acres. The project fronts on Cheek Road with single family residential to the north and west and industrial to the south and east. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates there is no change in the future land use map with the proposed subdivision, since the project area currently permits up to four units per acre. The proposable, the proposal is compatible with the existing land use patterns and consistent with the intent, goals and principles of the adopted plans. The site is of adequate shape and size, and the proposed density supports the anticipated growth and housing demand in the city. Next slide, please. The project of 101.3 acres is proposed to be rezoned from RR to PDR 3.159 to allow a maximum of 320 units. This development will include both townhomes and single family units to provide a transition from the existing residential developments on the west to the industrial development on the east. The existing residential developments range from 1.7 units per acre to up to 3.5 units per acre. The starting prices for these homes will depend on the market, but we do anticipate the townhomes starting in the low 200s and single family units in the mid 200s. I can see you've moved to the next slide. Thank you. The, the development plan is pretty busy, so I'll have highlighted a few key items for you. The green areas highlight the stream buffers, while the blue arrows show the stream crossing locations. The green arrows indicate access points and the orange arrows highlight the access points that will contain a traffic calming device. The hatched areas along the project limits delineate the project boundary buffers. The yellow outlined buffer is a required areas. The green outline buffer locations are where a required buffer has, has been increased to allow a natural buffer. And the blue outline buffer identifies where no buffer is required by the ordinance, but a natural buffer is being proposed. As requested by the neighbors, the red outlined areas identify the extent of the townhome locations, while the single family units can be developed throughout the entire project area. Not only is this a project, not only is this project a transition between existing zoning, but the commitments, this commitment provides a transition inside the proposed development as well. The image at the bottom right of your screen clarifies the improvements that will be made to Cheek Road based on the traffic impact analysis that was completed by Raimi Kempin Associates. They include an eastbound left turn lane, bike lanes, sidewalks and two egress lanes from the proposed subdivision. Additionally, the neighbors requested a traffic light be installed at this access point. A signal warrant analysis was completed, which ident, which indicated a signal was not warranted at this intersection. And this report was provided to City Transportation and N C O D, N C D O T for reference. Next slide, please. This slide identifies the 36 acres of land that is proposed for annexation along with this submittal. The remaining southern portion of the project area is already located within the city limits. Next slide. This is a summary of our key text and design commitments. As mentioned earlier, a maximum of 320, single family and multifamily townhome residential units. A minimum of 60 townhomes and maximum of 124, again, not to exceed that total maximum of 320 units. Multifamily townhomes and parking location restrictions, restrictions as identified by the red outline earlier. 30% of the townhomes will be limited to single car garage base. No unit will be constructed with a front exterior elevation or color palette that's identical to the unit on the side of it. Each building will have, will include a front facing gable architectural feature. We'll be providing a water service to the adjacent community gardens property for Merrick Moore Community. We'll provide a $20,500 contribution to Durham Public Schools, which in working with the CFO of Durham Public Schools will be directed to the Merrick Moore Elementary School. We'll provide a $40,000 contribution to the City of Durham Dedicated Housing Fund as well. Next slide, please. This, these are a traffic and pedestrian commitments, which include, as the last project did, construction of a concrete bus or pad shelter along East Gear Street. Construction of access point six with an ingress, two egress lanes and adequate storage. Construct an exclusive eastbound left turn lane on Cheek Road at access point number six, along with bike lanes on the north side of Cheek Road. We'll construct Fawcett Avenue within that existing right of way to site access two and dedicate 10 feet of additional right of way along Cheek Road. The average block length will not exceed 700 feet and traffic calming devices will be provided at access points one, three and four. We will construct a sidewalk to provide connection to the existing sidewalk at Merrick Moore Elementary School. Alternatively, a payment in lieu for this sidewalk may be made if the sidewalk would require modification of this, of the existing culvert and a sidewalk variance has been submitted and denied. Next slide, please. The last image is illustrated here. The image on the left shows to scale the existing cross section of Cheek Road at the box culvert, while the image on the right identifies a possible design for the construction of the sidewalk, which is beyond the project frontage to connect our project to Merrick Moore Elementary School. Next slide, please. This is a list of some of the environmental commitments. 22% tree preservation, which is in a, above the 20% requirement. Minimum of 30% open space, which is above the 16% requirement. Programmed open space to include three of the items illustrated. 3,000 linear feet of nature trails. A minimum of 20 foot wide natural buffer with a total of 25 foot wide buffer shall be located along the western property lines adjacent to the existing residential developments. You'll notice that the 20 foot item is look, is identified in red. That is because this commitment is listed as 13 foot on the development plan. We are committing tonight to increase this to 20 foot as requested by the neighbors. And finally, a survey of the natural heritage program will be, will be completed to identify the presence of endangered plant species. Next slide, please. Stormwater commitments are very happy to provide these tonight in coordination with the neighbors and city stormwater department. In addition to the peak runoff control requirements contained in section 70 to 738 of the city code, the post-development peak discharge shall not increase from the pre-development conditions at all locations where discharge from a stormwater control measure leaves the project boundary during the 200 year storm event. Prior to the site plan approval, city stormwater department shall review the erosion control plan to verify that each permanent stormwater control measure on the site plan is present on the erosion control plan, that it is acting as a sediment basin and the storage and pound capacity of each device meet or exceeds the depiction of the site plan, as well as the design calculations contained in the stormwater impact analysis. And again, that red highlighted item is a commitment that we're making tonight and not included on your plan. At all locations where the discharge from a stormwater control measure leaves the project boundary, the post-development runoff rate will not exceed 80% of the pre-development rate for the one, two and 10 year storm events. And finally, the volume of the erosion control basin shall be increased in size from 3,600 cubic feet per disturbed acre to 5,400 cubic feet per disturbed acre, a 150% increase. Next slide, please. The final three slides provide a comparison of what could be developed by right with a conservation subdivision and approved annexation versus our proposed rezoning. The, the by rights subdivision could develop up to 202 units with no required mix or location restrictions where the proposed rezoning is requesting 118 additional units, while limiting the number and location of townhome units as requested by the neighbors and requiring a mix of both single family and townhomes. The nature trails and architectural commitments provided by the rezoning are also not a requirement of a by right development. Next slide, please. The increase in landscape buffers and construction of Fawcett Avenue to the project site may not be included with a by right development. In addition, the traffic calming devices, block length restrictions, and especially the offsite sidewalk and water service to the community gardens would not be included with a by right development. Next slide, please. Even more important, the neighbors would not have the increased stormwater control, not to mention the increase in the erosion control sediment basin with the by right development, where our proposed rezoning is committing to all these items. And finally, the financial contributions to the Dedicated Housing Fund and Durham Public Schools are not a requirement of a by right conservation subdivision. Final slide, please. As is evident through this presentation, the project design and commitments have been provided with the existing neighborhoods in mind to allow a welcoming community for all with limiting the impact on the existing neighbors. I imagine you have received comments from the neighbors about existing flooding concerns as well. The neighbors, neighbors have made me aware of these concerns as well, which is exactly why we have provided the stormwater and erosion control commitments previously indicated. When these questions are brought up to the commission, the typical response to the applicant is, how did you address this? Yeah, thank you for asking. As mentioned earlier, we're committing to treating the 200 year storm event, which is well above the city requirements. We're also addressing the more frequent storms by reducing that runoff rate of the one, two and 10 year events by 20%. That means the speed of the water that floats off the property today in one of these events will be reduced by 20% after construction, minimizing that downstream flooding that occurs now. We have limited the location of the townhomes away from the existing residential homes and provided natural landscape buffers adjacent to the existing homes where no buffer is even required. In addition, the erosion control basin size, sizes are increased over the current regulations to help control stormwater during the current, the construction process. And keep in mind, these are all commitments above ordinance requirements and would not be included with a by right conservation subdivision. I do request that you vote in favor of this development that is consistent with the existing development patterns in the area, consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and provides the opportunity for additional housing choices while supporting our growing city. Thank you for your time and I'd like to reserve any additional time for responses to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Seivers. You have 20 seconds left, so I will hold. I, I, I'm sure we will have questions for you as well, so I'm sure you'll have opportunity to
Thank you, sir.
We will move to the individuals who've signed up as opponents. And again, as a reminder, you're going to have three minutes each. I will, I will time you and I will let you know when you hit your time. I'll just ask that you finish your thought when we get to that moment. And I will read some names in advance and then we'll ask, if, if you haven't been recognized and you'd like to speak, then we'll move beyond the folks who've signed up in advance. The first few names that have signed up, and this is just in the order that you signed up. Billy D, Gina Wisatsky, Vanessa Mason- Billy D, Gina Wisatsky, Vanessa Mason Evans, Ayana Smith, and John Talmage. So we'll start with Billy D. Billy, I see you there, but it looks like you're on mute. I don't know if there, if you need to come off of mute to be able to speak. Chris is, I don't know if you have any tech guidance to give us to, to help get Billy D off of mute.
I submitted unmute request, um, we might be, uh, we might need to circle back.
Okay. Uh, Billy, we'll be back and we'll move on to Gina Wisatsky.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Gina Wisatsky. I'm a resident at two-six-one-five Cone Avenue. That's one of the streets that is going to be opened if this is to be approved. Um, it's heartening to see some of these concerns taken into consideration by Tim. However, it seems like the issue of the conservation subdivision. Is being presented in a way that makes it look as if it is. Going to be detrimental and not giving us enough, but it's my understanding that we'll have opportunities to work within that plan. To get some of the buffers that are guaranteed and seeing some head shaking, so apparently not. We have been working really hard to collaborate with Tim on this development. It's going to be a huge impact on our neighborhood and many of the other communities around here. This is a really special part of Durham that is incredibly diverse. It has a wonderful mix of people. And it has a really lovely feel that we're really grateful to be a part of as we start to raise our young family here. We are really concerned with the environmental impact of this development. Um, the land that we are on has a pond that is fed by streams that run through this property. We have seen really, really intense flooding here. Um, with Hurricane Michael, the pond almost overflowed into our neighbor's property. And that property drains over, um, Milan and then into Gear Street. So the area behind our house in this proposed development. Has a ton, a ton of streams. And during these storms, it becomes extremely flooded, very swampy. And all of that drains onto our property here, which then has to go somewhere else. And so we're concerned that any impermeable surfaces that are added back there. Um, any road construction that goes right next to that area would be. Really impacting our property and the neighborhood as a whole. There's a lot of wildlife that comes through here and also just a lovely feel of Durham as how it used to be. And how it could still be if we are really careful and considerate and mindful about how we develop. In this community. We also have concerns about affordability, about people being able to stay in this community. About our neighbors being able to stay in their houses. And safety as well, because the traffic increase coming in here. Not to mention all of the increased infrastructure with the highways in the area. Making this really quiet, safe and lovely neighborhood, a place that is just kind of. Being opened up to a lot of increased traffic. And we are really amenable to working with developers. You know, we know that this is a really up and coming area. We don't expect this place to be woods forever. But we do want to have input and to have an open conversation. A lot of the concessions here seem very generous, but they're just five feet addition tree buffers. Um, a lot of these commitments are on paper, but the developer can come in and it's up to them to decide whether. They want to add some of these things or not.
You could wrap her, that'd be great. Thank you.
So that pretty much sums all of it up. Um, you know, again, leaving open that wanting to collaborate, but also knowing that a lot of these offers are very incremental. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wisatsky. Uh, Billy D, are you available to speak at this point? All right, Billy, we'll move on to Vanessa Mason Evans. We'll be back, Billy.
Good evening again, everyone. Um, my concerns are the, are the same as. Um, many of the communities being affected in Durham. Again, uh, having people who are being displaced out of their homes because of the cost of the houses. Um, especially the long-time residents who have been in these spaces. And the income factors are not meeting with what Durham is changing to. Uh, making sure the developers again are truly, truly working with the, the residents of this community is very important. And the need of affordable housing is, is important. I don't care where you are in Durham. And there should be all spaces throughout Durham where there is affordable housing. For essential workers and people who live in Durham, um, and have been here all their life. You have a lot of people who are coming from out of town and working, but you have people also who are in Durham. And work, but they also need to have a space where they can live and feel safe and comfortable. Um, I wanted to make a comment about how the trees and stuff are being cut down. Um, a neighbor, um, called or let me know from their ring. And my ring that, uh, there were four wolves loose two nights ago. In Durham, over by William Penn, uh, which is near Carver. So you have to look at when you're cutting down trees and you're displacing animals, where are these animals going? A lot of them are coming to the residential area, so I'm gonna say we need to think twice on how we're building and developing stuff. I have nothing against developers, please understand that. Um, I just wanna make sure that there's spaces for everybody to live in Durham and feel comfortable. I've been here all my life. And I feel like people who have been here all their life need to be able to stay in those spaces if that's what they wanna do. But so many black and brown people have already been pushed out of Durham. Because of the way housing has been developed without the community being a part of what's going on in Durham. I thank y'all for listening to us and giving us a chance to maybe change the platform some. Um, I just wanna see the developers that wanna work more and more with communities. Make sure there's safe spaces as far as walking. Because it's concerning too with over in the Merrick Moore area, there's goat paths. The same is over here where I'm at, um, and there needs to be more sidewalks. And when these developers build in these certain areas, they need to build sidewalks out beyond what they are required to do. So those are just some of my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
You're welcome.
Ayana Smith? I see your hand raised. We'll, we'll, I think you're off mute now.
Okay. Um, good evening Chair Busby and all of the members of the planning commission. Um, my name is Ayana Smith. I live at eight-one-two Center Street. Um, right at the corner of Center Street and Cheek Road. Um, before I start, I also wanted to mention that the president of our community club. Benita Green submitted a presentation to be shown, um, to the commission tonight. And so we're just wondering if, if you received that presentation. Um, and so you can respond to that, um, later if you like, or now, if you like, um.
I'll just say now, unless the staff has seen it, I, I have not seen it, but I hope. I hope we will be able to see it as part of this.
Okay, um, and she's listening in right now, so hopefully she's able to make contact with someone, um, while I'm speaking. But what I would like to speak on tonight is about, um, just safer streets. Um, I have lived in this community for one year. And, um, the two-lane highway, uh, Cheek Road is extremely dangerous in my opinion. Um, when I first moved in, I decided to walk my dog up to Merrick Moore, which is not very far at all. And I was almost hit by a car. And so, uh, therefore I've, I have not walked up Cheek Road again. Um, and so I just wanted to impart that to the commission. That there is a lot of traffic on Cheek Road. Right now, it doesn't seem to be because of the pandemic. But typically, um, when school is in, the school buses, when they drop off, they actually stop traffic on both lanes. And traffic gets backed up for hundreds of feet. Um, and that's dangerous because students will sometimes cross at that area. And sometimes cars do go around the bus, which is not appropriate. Um, and so I just wanted to, to again say that, um, I am not against development at all. I'm from Michigan and so I'm definitely accustomed to living in dense communities. I did move to this community because it was not dense ironically, but I am not against development. Um, but what I would like to see are, are safer streets. Um, and so if, at some point tonight, if we are able to get the presentation going, I am going to speak again during the presentation. Thank you. Oh, there it is.
Uh, what, thank you very much for your comments. Let me just pause and ask. If there was a preferred order of speakers for this presentation? Because I can, I can work with you to try to tee everyone up in the appropriate order.
Okay, um, so Benita Green was first and then I was second and Benita can let you know who, um, comes after.
Okay, what we'll, what we'll work to do here is, uh, you, you still have some time remaining. And so why don't we move to Ms. Green and she can begin? And, uh, Ms. Green, if you don't mind letting me know, are there additional speakers after yourself and Ms. Smith?
Yes, Chairman Busby, there will be David Corley and Kyle Marion.
Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll move them up in order.
Uh, okay.
Maybe again.
Okay, so first of all, I would like to thank all of you, um, say thank you to the commissioners for allowing us to present. Um, this presentation to you. Um, if we can move to the next slide, please. This is the history of Merritt Moore. The Millie Estate on the Roan plantation is the original home to now Merritt Moore Community. The community ran along Cheek Road, which was Fish Dam Road until nineteen fifty. Our community was officially developed by, by V F Pope and H L Noel in nineteen forty-seven. With the first black family to purchase land and build a home in nineteen forty, the Thompsons. Many of the first to purchase lots and build were ver- veterans of World War Two. Who were released from duty of service between nineteen forty-five and nineteen forty-six. Merritt Moore High School, which came in nineteen fifty, and the Mount Zorbaptist Church, which came in nineteen fifty-two. Were the nuclear of the community. Homeowners were made up of families who own multiple properties, which were inherited by their children. Who continue to either reside in the community or lease their properties. Originally a community of black homeowners, we are much more diverse multicultural community today. Working cohesively to establish our community garden. Next slide, we'll move to Ayana.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to comment again about safer streets. Um, we would love for the developer to commit to the complete streets plan. Um, to well-designed streets that allow safe, comfortable travel for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists. And public transit users, um, as well as, um, installing the traffic control light at Cheek and Fosset Avenue. Next slide, please. Um, and so if you, um, if you look, um, at this slide, you'll see two stars. Um, those stars represent two fatalities on Cheek Road unfortunately. Um, but also between the years twenty fifteen through twenty twenty, there's been about a hundred and twelve, um, automotive accidents. Um, and the other thing that you may notice, the red dots represents, um, bus stops. And there are no bus stops along this route, uh, uh, along from Cheek Road and Hardy all the way to, um, to where the development is. Next slide.
Um, Ms. Benita again. Protection for property owners, protection from displacement. So we have a big concern over our, our, um, long-time residents here. Who are at risk from displacement due to rising property taxes. Home values and property taxes in Durham continue to rise, but incomes do not for many families. Black homeowners are taxed at a twenty percent higher rate than white property owners. These conditions can lead to displacement of long-time homeowners, homeowners and destabilization, stabilization of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this map is representative of, um, the property values within the community. The, the green area, big green area that you see. Um, there is a property that was purchased by the city to develop in a, to a park. So you see that lies within our Merritt Moore Community. The dark blue, um, areas, the darker blue areas are, have. Rise from forty-one point six percent and up. The, the next level, the deep blue areas are properties that are worth twenty-five percent and up. Medium blue, sixteen point four percent to twenty-five percent. And the light blue is seven point four percent to six point four percent. So you see the property values have not been raised on an equal basis throughout the community. But there are select homes in areas that have been raised a little bit higher than the others. This puts a strain on the neighborhood as we have prospectors coming in who are only. Trying to pay the bottom minimum for a property. And then they fifty thousand dollars and they turn around and flip it and sell it for two hundred thousand dollars. There's no place for our, um, people that are on low, on disability. And so security, security income to relocate to at that rate. So we need, really need to look at the consideration for the property taxes that have been considerably going up over the past years. We've not had any money vested back into our community and also that that property taxes are gonna rise again from this new development. Um, and so, you know, we're looking at grave concern for our neighbors in our community here. Because the taxes continue to rise, there's no reinvestment in this community. We see our tax dollars going outside of the community, so, you know. And we do need the safety issues. We need those sidewalks. We need, you know, traffic control and we need. Um, public transportation. None of those things that we, we have, but our grocery stores are located well outside of the community. Next slide. This, and we can turn it over to David Corley.
Thank you. Mr. Corley, uh, we'll, we'll get you off of mute and then we'll have Kyle Marion follow you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, this is just a, uh, some of the timeline of, of, um, of the meetings that we've had. I think it sort of illustrates how, how, you know, much we've, we've worked with Tim and, and a lot of other people, um, city officials as well. To, to cut, try and compromise and come up with a cohesive plan that could work with, you know, well for all of these communities involved. Because there are four communities that are gonna be affected by this, so I think that speaks also to the, the uniqueness of this property. Um, but we've met with Tim Cybers on several occasions. Um, you know, the first time we had a meeting, um, the property, the, the density was around two hundred and eighty homes total. And we actually, at that point, this was about a year and a half ago, we actually didn't have such a problem with that. We were willing to compromise and. It wasn't ideal, but we could work with him. Um, the next time that we met with him would have been thirteen months later and it was three months before, or three weeks before we met with you the last time when we got that extension. Um, and that was the point where we found out for the first time that these units had gone up from two eighty to three twenty, which is about a twenty percent increase. And it's, it's a significant increase to find out, especially three weeks before your planning, um, commission meeting. Um, and so we've met with Katie Rose from treesduron.org, um, as well as Ricky White. Who, um, who Katie Rose knows well and we, we are, are, have been in communication with as well. Um, and both of them were very concerned about this situation. And, you know, and Katie Rose actually brought up the idea of a conservation neighborhood at that point. And actually, you know, we, we sort of as a group, we talked about that and that was on the table. Um, but we actually in really good faith, um, and hearing so much about how Tim Cybers was willing to communicate with us and often and. Um, compromise and as we were told, actually, once someone quoted us as he was the golden boy in the planning department and the, um, city council. So, you know, we took that at, 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 at face value and we took that with good faith and we tried to work with him on a plan. To come up with a compromise actually that would be, would actually afford him a little bit more units. We know the conservation subdivision allows a little bit less units, so it's around two oh four. And we actually wanted to see if we could give him a little bit more density. I mean, that's how, um, willing we were to compromise. So, uh, moving on from that point, we met with city council member Dion, Deidreana Freeman. Um, who was particularly concerned about the environmental impact in this area as well as traffic concern, um, being a mother her, herself.
And Corley, I'm just gonna note, you've got about a minute left, so I.
Okay.
Go to your main points before.
Yeah, so, yeah, so then we met with Tom Miller, Akram, Nate Baker. We tried to, um. On-site with Akram and, uh, Tom Miller and we tried to, to sort of show the unique habitat here and how environmentally. Um, susceptible it is. Um, then, uh, we met with Scott Whitman of the planning department, met with Shay. So I think really, uh, just moving to this list, I think really it just, again, it illustrates how much we've actually been trying to work. We, none of us have, this is, none of us, this is a full-time job for us. None of us have, this is, none of us, this is a full-time job for us. And we've been working really hard to try and work with Tim Cybers in good faith. None of us, I don't think, have a problem with Tim Cybers. I, I don't think he's nefarious in any way. But we just, we wanna see more for a property that is this unique. So I'll just pass it on to the next slide and let Kyle talk.
Thank you.
Next slide after this one.
Kyle, are you, Mr. Marion, are you available to speak?
Oh, actually Kyle asked me if you could unmute him, just in case. He gave me his number, if that helps.
Chris, on the tech side, are we, are we able to work?
As a panelist, he should be able to speak right now. If he called in, he can stop dial star nine, we can also use that if he's one of the dial-in numbers. It might be this number right here, I'll make sure. Phone number ending in three zero one nine.
There we go, can you all hear me now?
You're good.
Yes.
All right, sorry, computer audio can be choppy out here, so wanted to get in with my phone. So yeah, thanks for the three minutes, by the way. I thought I was gonna have to speak a mile a minute, so I'll take a deep breath. Basically, I wanna start by saying I, I don't want to be here in opposition. I wanted to be here supporting a reasonable compromise. I, I do wanna quickly first say though, one area where I want to applaud the applicant is stormwater protections. So I, you know, frankly, they deserve an A plus in that area. And I don't wanna fail to express appreciation for that, even though we only have three minutes. It is also my opinion that, you know, downstream flooding protection should be considered ideally more of a basic expectation of a new proposal than a luxury. And, you know, in my opinion, shouldn't preclude the community from having input elsewhere on the project. Whoops, just got signed out, I guess. Can you all still hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my, my video just lost, but I'll keep going. So I'll, I'll focus on my main area of disappointment here. I, I feel like we've been artificially anchored to a largely arbitrary default number, quote unquote, of, you know, three hundred and twenty units and twenty percent tree save. And any movement from that has basically been a non-starter, not really even up for discussion. But I will ask, why hasn't the conversation been more anchored to the specifics dictated by a conservation subdivision? You know, to me, this piece of land, as David said, it's very unique and it's exhibit A for why that option exists in the code in the first place. It's a rural residential lot on the outer border of the city. It's a fully mature forest with over twenty percent acreage being wetland and protected stream area. It's in an area where green space for resident has been, residence has been pretty fully neglected by the city. So, you know, I ask, if this property isn't deemed appropriate for that type of development, what is? To me, the burden of proof should lie on any developer for this plot to argue why the rules of a conservation subdivision aren't good enough. Why are we allowing them to raise this acreage of forest, fill in the wetlands, build massive artificial drainage ponds to compensate, and create another impermeable moonscape heat island, when the perfect plan for a property just like this already exists? Further, our original asks were not even as restricted, restricted as those of a conservation subdivision. And that's kind of the thing, we don't need the developer to fully commit to a conservation subdivision to, you know, support this, which would be max of two hundred and four units and fifty percent tree save. You know, we don't even need them to commit to our original less stringent asks of two hundred and twenty-three units and forty percent tree save. But as David said, the net result of the entire last year plus has been going from two hundred and eighty up to three hundred and twenty units, and from twenty percent tree save up to twenty-one and now twenty-two percent tree save. That's, you know, it's nowhere close to a compromise, to meeting in the middle, to either the conservation subdivision or our kind of data-backed asks. It feels, from a community standpoint, like a pretty clear message that resident input doesn't matter on those points. And in our opinion, it's nowhere close to an appropriate use of this unique plot of land. So therefore, again, while this isn't what we wanted, we don't wanna be here asking for a flat no rejection. But we feel like, you know, we, we, we gave our original asks, we got the response back of what you see in front of you, and basically there is no room for further discussion. So we feel kind of forced into a corner of asking you, you know, due to no other option, asking you to vote no on this proposal as it stands, unless the developer is willing to commit to a density and tree save more in the middle of what they proposed and what is dictated by a conservation subdivision. You know, personally, that's, that's all I would ask here. Yet here we are, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Sure, if you don't mind, could you just?
That's all.
Could you give your name and, and address? I don't think we got that at the beginning of your comments.
Oh, sure, sorry, lost that tech issues. My name is Kyle Marion and I'm at one six zero eight Milan Street in Northeast Hills.
Great, thank you. And thank you to the four of you for the, the presentation. We're, we're gonna circle back to the remaining speakers in the order that they were signed up. And so I'll read the next couple of names, just so we can get you in order. John Talmadge, Jason Bezula, Trevor Standford, and Martha McCormack are the next four speakers. And so we'll start with Mr. Talmadge. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Talmadge. I live at nine oh eight Vergey Street in Old West Durham, and I'm the executive director of Bike Durham and speaking on behalf of the organization this evening. Speaking in support with the Merrick Moore community and the points that they've raised, but particularly wanna just raise the concern about the, the dangers, the risks of walking and biking on Cheek Road under its current condition, while the, what the developer has offered in, in terms of sidewalk and bike lane is, is good. And the fact that they've are committing to extend it to Merrick Moore Elementary is, is positive. I would say that they should not have an out on the extension to Merrick Moore Elementary School. And just want to, you know, it's not going to change whether it's safe for someone to go out and walk their dog or try and get to another place on this street, putting all of these homes at this time when the rest of Cheek Road is still a dangerous, narrow, and, and, and sometimes fast street. The, the places that anyone can get safely are very limited. And the bicycle lane, if I caught the design that was on the, the graphic, is only on their side of the street. And so it doesn't, you know, you can get out from their neighborhood, but you can't get back because they're, they're one-way bike lanes. So some of these things are bigger issues about the timing of development and when you have appropriate and sufficient infrastructure to support, support the development. Some of these things are gonna have to be fixed in the comprehensive plan. But at this point in time, those remain issues for approving this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jason Bezula?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Jason Bezula. I live at twenty-five oh three Joiner Road. I live probably about a mile and a half from this proposed development. And I've been sitting in on a lot of the meetings that the residents that live right around it have been having. And I, there's not a lot I can add on to what they have already stated. But I can, you know, back up that they've been working really hard on trying to get a compromise with the developer. And so it's, you know, it's the same, I, I can kind of just state the same sort of things. I mean, as someone who's lived here for, in Durham for seven years, driving down Cheek Road, it's an extremely narrow and dangerous road. And adding the amount of vehicle volume that this development would, would add is just gonna make that worse. And I mean, it's bad enough that we've seen two deaths on that area of road and adding a huge amount of more traffic is unfortunately gonna, you know, it can potentially make that even worse and have more people injured or potentially die. And so I, I just think everyone should consider voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor Standford. Trevor Standford, are you with us and able to, I see you're there. Are you able to speak? You look like you're unmuted, so do you wanna give it a try? All right, we're gonna move on and we will circle back to you, Martha McCormack.
Hi, are y'all able to hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Excellent. I, my name is Martha McCormack. I live at three Jessica Court, which is in Milan Woods. I wasn't able to, I, I didn't sign in to speak at the last meeting. My major concern, and I hear, and I'm also concerned about everything everyone else has spoken about, but Milan Woods has really narrow streets. And one of the egresses from the proposed development is right into our neighborhood. And our, I mean, our streets are so narrow, if two cars are parked opposite each other, one car has to stop and wait until the other car goes by for them to get up and down the street. The number of people they're talking, uh, homes they're talking about putting in there, like more than potentially doubles the traffic in our neighborhood. And I, Mr. Cybers, are you there?
He's here, but this is, this is your time to speak if, if
Well, then I'll, then I'll just speak, thank you. Mr. Cybers, I brought this up when we had the people way back in the spring, we had the people who were supposed, just, just the people who are immediately impacted by the proposed development. And you had mentioned that y'all didn't have an access from that end of your proposed subdivision. Did you ever look into getting an easement from, there, it looks like there's some empty property all the way over to Gear Street? And I, I, anyway, I wish you had. And that's, thank you, that's all I have to say, except please don't let them have an egress into our little tiny narrow streeted subdivision. And thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you. Next is Camille Jackson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Camille Jackson. I live at sixteen oh one Milan Street, which is at the corner of Milan and Winburne Avenue. And I wasn't able to sign in for the last meeting to express my concerns. But I reviewed this proposal in a lot of detail. And honestly, I have to second what everyone else has said. I walk this neighborhood often with my dog. I've lived here thirteen years. And I walk up the street from Milan, up to Fawcett to Logan. And that is gonna be the site of one of the, the entry points. And I just mourn that specialness of that moment, because those trees are gonna be gone and there's gonna be traffic there and cars are gonna fly by. And I'm not gonna feel safe walking my dog. And that is something that I really cherish about this neighborhood. And I'm so sad that we're gonna lose it. And I don't know if these nature trails and amenities that the developer has mentioned will satisfy that. But I think, I think part of what makes Durham special is, is neighborhoods like this. So many kinds of people live here. And I feel like, I feel like, you know, development is inevitable, but we have to figure out if it's really smart and if we're doing it the smart way. And if there's gonna be so much damage to the environment and damage to the people here that already make the neighborhood special, I'm not sure this is the way to go. And so that's why I signed up to talk tonight. I'm not, as you can tell, a public speaker. But I had to let my voice be heard on this, because I love this neighborhood and I don't wanna lose it. And if there's some compromise that can be made, if Tim Cybers could reconsider his, the three hundred and twenty and reduce that to just half of that, to reduce the impact and really consider the people who are already here, I would appreciate, appreciate that and I appreciate the council, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and you are a very good public speaker.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Lorraine Haskell. I don't see Lorraine here, but if, if you are here, if you can raise your hand so we could identify you. I see a lot of other hands raised and we'll get to those, but Lorraine Haskell? Okay, we're gonna move on. I don't see any new hands raised, so I, I'm not sure she is here with us. Next is Patsy Woodard. Ms. Woodard, we'll work to get you off of mute. I see that you're with us this evening. Are you able to speak? You should be off mute.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Patsy Woodard and I live at twenty-six twelve Cone Avenue. And have, I have lived here for fifty years. My property, I have two hundred and twelve feet property that is bordering this property that is to be rezoned. If Cone Avenue is open, it would go directly into all these wetlands that we've heard about. And I am very concerned about the flooding that would and could get to our neighbors in Landon Farms. I was wondering if Tim Cybers has given y'all the soil and environmental consultant report that he got. It was made in, something, I just keep going in, excuse me. It was dated, uh, twenty, May the second, two thousand and eighteen, that was made on the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty Fawcett Avenue Site Plan. I didn't know, I don't see it in any of the other things that have come in. I am not against development. It's not my fault that the flood, that, that they're trying to build on this delegate wetland. Please keep Cone Avenue stub closed. Since the density has been increased from two hundred and eighty dwi- single dwellings to a hundred and ninety-six single, uh, townhouses, it really does put it, the density so big. I feel this land is more suitable now for conservation subdivision. I am not against the development at all, but I do think we need to do this, this in a right way. I'm also very concerned about the traffic that would be bringing on the very already crowded two-lane road of Gear Street that goes to Milan Street and then through Northeast Hills. I invite y'all to come out and look at this area again before you rezonate. Thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Woodard. Next, we have Ricky White. And then Chase Markovic will be after Ricky.
Hi, y'all, can you hear me? Great. Uh, this is Ricky White. I'm, uh, the Executive Director of Upby Creek Watershed Association, and I also am a resident of Durham, living at sixteen-two Delaware Avenue. I, I just wanted to speak, um, on behalf of the folks in the Merrick Moore and, uh, Milan Woods community. I did meet with them, um, out on the site along with a few other folks, Clay Tom, uh, got a little bit of a tour. I, I think that, uh, you know, I, I do want to commend the developer for, uh, for the stormwater improvements that they made. A couple of the points that I, I take issue with would be, one, the, and I've mentioned this to the Plan Commission before, natural heritage, um, inventories are meant to be conducted in a way that we can identify species and conserve them on-site ideally. And the preferment, I believe, is to identify the species so that they can be removed if they're found. And so I think we need to be careful about setting that precedent as we did here and as we, uh, did on a similar development, um, proposal in Bragtown that, um, that Horvath brought to the council, uh, a few weeks ago. And, um, they had already removed those species. Um, I think the preferred situation would be that we, uh, use the, the open space that is designated on the site to conserve, uh, rare species in C2, if possible. The second is, uh, I just want to support the community's desire, and Merrick Moore's desire in particular for conservation subdivision. There's a lot of consensus around this idea, or at the very least having the developer increase the amount of, um, conserved land to, uh, come closer to that conservation subdivision designation. Those are the main two points I wanted to make, um, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White. Chase Markovic is next.
Uh, hi, y'all can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, so my name is Chase Markovich. I live at thirteen twenty-four Logan Street in the Mylan Woods neighborhood. Um, I mostly wanted to chime in because, uh, my property, I think, is unique in that it includes a portion of a stream uh, that is coming downstream from Harvest Street, uh, and it travels through the wooded areas, uh, connected to what was formerly, uh, designated as a wetlands, which I've gone back there and have checked it out, and it definitely is wet, uh, and stays that way most of the year. And so I imagine includes, like, uh, collects a lot of the stormwater. It also is on the other side of a kind of like ridge that I think is in the path of the proposed townhomes, as well as the road that connects the development with Logan Street. And so it looks from the development plans that like this road goes directly over the wetlands area. Um, so I'm specifically concerned about how that changes the water flow directly behind my house. There's already been some evidence of, uh, like, an especially large amount of water that passes over the property, getting to the stream, uh, which is, as I mentioned, on my property. Uh, my neighbor is documented, he's lived here for five years. I just moved here last year. Uh, but, uh, he has documented how much water actually crosses the front yard to go to the stream. And I feel like the ridge behind the house, uh, largely directs a lot of that water flow into the stream in a safe way. And so I'm concerned about these townhomes that are proposed and how they would, uh, like, change the elevation and affect the water flow, especially since that already exists as like a natural buffer, and I'm very much preserving as much of the, the natural, uh, environment, uh, for the sake of animals, for the sake of, uh, the mental health of anyone who lives in our neighborhoods, as well as the proposed neighborhood. I also am in agreement with everyone on the points of increased traffic. I'm from a city that, from many cities that, uh, are much more, uh, safe to bike. That has been a disappointment in general in how much, um, like biking is dangerous here, uh, so. Uh, yeah, any way that, that could, is, you know, more safer. So I think it's really all that I would like to say.
Thank you. The, the final, yeah, thank you, and the, the final speaker, and then I'll circle back to a few folks with some technical issues, is Nick Voss. Uh, I don't see Nick signed up, but there is at least one phone number here that isn't identified. So, Mr. Voss, if you are with us, if you can raise your hand, and you can hit star nine to digitally raise your hand. Okay, I don't see Mr. Voss with us this evening. I'm gonna circle back to Billy D. Billy, I see you're still here. Are you able to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, yeah, everyone, um, thanks so much, um, for the time to speak. Um, I'm here in support of the Merrick Moore community, um, and learned of the issues that, um, Vanita Green and others highlighted in their presentation, um, through emails and phone calls over the last few months. And, um, I just want to highlight those same points. I think the, the question of the displacement of longtime homeowners is a huge issue and should be really considered, like what, what is the larger impact of development and how are we thinking of that? Um, as Tom Miller said earlier in the conversation, I think that the city is really in a process of just trying to understand what equity in development really is, and I think there's some big questions here about that. Um, again, the environmental issue is brought up by several people, including Ricky Hart, about, um, what does it mean to set a precedent of removing, yet potentially removing endangered species from a site to make way for development versus thinking about, wha- what are some more mindful practices we might have, um, to protect areas? And I think the unique, um, unique nature of this, the habitat in this area has been pretty well described. Of course, I, I appreciate all the comments about public safety as well. So I think, I just want to support the comments from this community, and, um, I've been, you know, obviously, I'm concerned about about similar development in my own community, um, and I think, yeah, I, I, I'm just here to support what the community is hoping for, and I feel like I don't need to belabor the points that have been raised. Um, but I, I really do appreciate the time to speak, and I do appreciate that developers did make changes in the plans, um, but it does seem clear that those, those changes just, um, do not answer to the questions that the community asked in terms of displacement, loss of community identity, environmental damage, and these larger questions of safety. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. And then finally, we have Trevor Standford. Trevor, it looks like you're still with us, so if we're able to, if you can speak, this is your time.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, my name is Trevor Standford, and I live at twenty Alicia Court in the Milan Woods neighborhood. And, uh, my wife and I have lived here for twenty years, and, um, it's a beautiful, quiet neighborhood. You can walk the streets easily, and my main concern is the traffic. I'm all for the developer making as much money as they can, but I just don't know that they have the right to do that when it negatively affects those of us that are already here. Um, and I believe that the surrounding infrastructure needs to be such that it can support, uh, all of these homes. And I'm not so sure that the chic and the gear roads are, are up to par to support that. And I just definitely don't see the need or the right for them to connect to our neighborhood, which will increase the traffic, making our streets less walkable. And their nature trails don't help us here in Milan Woods. We'd have to walk these busier streets even to get to the nature trails. And I also do support some of the other concerns that the neighbors have voiced as far as conservation and kind of the travesty of building, uh, over the wetlands. And short and sweet, but that's about all I have to say. I just don't think that it's fair to, uh, to impinge upon Milan Woods with extra traffic. And if they were to say that the traffic won't be that much, then I say that, then there's no need to build a road through our, our community. Thank you for the time.
Thanks for your comments. That's everyone who signed up in advance, so I'm just gonna look at who has their hand raised, and I'm, I'm just gonna call on individuals who have their hand raised, who have not yet spoken in the public hearing. And so the, the only person I see at this moment is Constance Wright. Ms. Wright, if you're available, uh, you may have three minutes to speak. I'll give it just one more moment. It looks like we're, we're working to get you off of mute. Chris, is there anything we, we need to do to help get Ms. Wright off of mute?
I submitted a unmute request. I'm just waiting for Ms. Wright to accept it.
Okay. Zoom bureaucracy. There we go.
Okay, okay, good evening, and, um, thank you for taking my comment. I just want to say that I do support, um, the Merrick Moore, um, commit, this community also. They are going through the same things that we in Bragtown are going through as far as, um, the environment, the safety, traffic, property taxes, um, you know, just everything that we are going through. So I understand what they're asking. I thank, um, the developers for trying, it's just not enough. So, um, I'm asking you all to do a no vote, uh, in faith, you know, on behalf of them until, you know, we could get some more things straightened out. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Give it one more moment. If there's anyone who would like to speak who has not yet spoken, you can hit star nine to raise your hand.
Chair Busby, this is Tim Cybers. Is this the opportunity to respond, or will I have an opportunity later?
Uh, you'll have an opportunity later, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll close the public comment period, and I'll, I'll commit that if no one else on the commission asks, I will directly ask you a question to, uh, to be able to respond to some of the, the comments and concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Ponsella Brown, I saw your hand go up and then come back down. If you are interested in speaking, you can put your hand back up and, and we'll give you time to speak. Okay, I don't see anyone else asking. Ms. Brown, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, I want, I would like to ditto what everyone else has said tonight. Um, Cheek Road is very narrow, extremely dangerous. The builders are looking at building sidewalks that go into their community. Uh, if everything is, is proposed on that side. However, if you are a parent or if you are not, I have seen and identified a six-year-old child get killed on Cheek Road trying to get to school. The traffic is terrible. I would not like to have to identify another child getting killed on Cheek Road trying to get to school. The traffic is heavy. This child didn't live a few feet down from, um, the proposed development. I've also seen other students walking towards Southern High School, and with this added traffic, it is extremely dangerous. So I just would like for you all to say no, and think about these students and these kids on the, on these streets trying to get to school. That's all I have to say, and I hope you take what I said into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I don't see anyone else asking to speak who hasn't spoken yet, so thank you all for your comments. Before I turn to the commissioners, uh, Mr. Cybers, I'll give you a moment for any, uh, final comments, in particular, if they can be couched around any of the public comments that we've been hearing.
Yes, Chair Busby, thank you for the, the time. There was a, a bunch of comments there, and I've tried to, tried to write most of them down with, um, just a short response to do, to them. Some of the neighbors did mention about working with me, and, and they have been great to work with. So I, I do also, um, push that gratitude back to neighbors and being open to their, uh, their willingness to work with us too. Um, we do understand the concerns, and, and I do want to address some of those. Um, the environmental impact, I've already reviewed a lot of the stormwater commitments that we've provided. Actually went over those twice, um, as a clarity point in my earlier presentation. Uh, again, um, treating the, uh, two-hundred-year storm event, treating, uh, a reduction of twenty percent to the one, two, and ten-year event, which will help with current flooding. As for the wetlands, uh, it's only about a quarter acre of wetlands on the site that are outside of the stream buffers. So, um, so there, there are, are, uh, three streams or four streams that, uh, that dissect the site, but outside of those stream buffers, it's only about a quarter acre of wetlands, and we'll be working with state and federal government regulations if those are impacted. Um, there was a comment about only a, a five-foot additional of, um, some landscape buffers. Um, some of these buffers that we are providing and committed to on the development plan are not required at all. Um, and in some cases that, uh, but the majority of, um, some of the subdivisions, there are actually none required where we're providing twenty-five foot in total, and twenty foot of that will be natural. Um, some of the safe spaces, that's been a big key tonight with a lot of the residents, and I personally, um, have walked that road, and I've walked from the project to the school, um, so I can feel it as, as some of the residents invited me out, and I appreciate them walking that with me. And, and I, and that is exactly why we provided the text commitment for the sidewalk over to the school. So it's not just in front of our project, um, but we are making that, that text commitment that I discussed earlier about that, uh, commitment to do the sidewalk over to the school. Um, I did, um, traffic light was also discussed. I believe, um, you know, our traffic consultant Nate, uh, with, um, with Raimi Kemp will be able to respond to that if there's more questions on that. But we did, because of the concern, we did go ahead and complete a traffic warrant analysis ahead of, uh, now. Typically, that's done at site plan. Um, we didn't want to provide false hope. Um, so, um, through working with Erlene Thomas and Transportation, we completed that and provided that study to, uh, Transportation and NCDOT. Um, I do want to note that we are committed to the bus stop on Gear Street as well. Um, and sidewalk will, um, as Commissioner Baker has noted many times, that sidewalk is now required on both sides of the street internally, and then, um, along our frontage, and then our commitment over to the school as well, so. About investing into the community, the sidewalks are a big part of that, providing safe sidewalks, safe streets, um, within the community, but also, um, specifically, uh, connection to the, to the elementary school. Water access to the community gardens was mentioned, um, and the financial contributions to the, uh, to not only affordable housing, but to the, uh, Durham Public Schools, and in this case, working with the Durham Public Schools to specify that that can be directed to Merrick Moore Elementary. So it's not just going to all the schools, but we're, this project is specifically committing to working and providing, investing in this community by providing that donation to Merrick Moore Elementary. Gear Street Connection, there was a question about, um, an easement to the Gear Street Connection. I believe it was the, the lady who, um, wanted to speak to me, um, directly, um, and I wrote down, um, there that, please note that that is outside of our project limits. We don't actually connect to Gear Street. And from our project boundary over to Gear Street is actually owned by the Landon, uh, Landon Farms Homeowners Association, and there's, um, wetlands in that area and stream crossing, so there'd be a lot of environmental impacts that would have to take place to make that crossing. Not only it's Landon Farms Homeowners Association, so it's not, it's outside the project limits. So if there's any other questions, um, on traffic, I guess, is the final item, I would like to, uh, pass that to Nate Bookwin with Raimi Kemp's, or Raimi Kemp and Associates, or maybe Erlene, um, with, uh, City Transportation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments, especially addressing some of the, the questions from the, the public that they had during their public comment period. Uh, I'm gonna move to the commissioners now, and, uh, Commissioner Miller, I know you've got your hand raised, so we will start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have questions for the developer and for, for the neighbors. A lot of the debate tonight seems to have gone around this issue of conservation subdivision, and whether or not, and how many units would, might, might be built on this site. And so I wanted to ask Mr. Cybers, uh, on behalf of his clients, and I know it may be a hard question to answer in the context of a planning commission hearing, but, uh, is there a possibility of changing, uh, of reducing the number of units here, recognizing that, uh, reducing the number of units, uh, means that you might have, uh, larger areas of the development would be available for conservation? Reducing the number of units means a re- a, a smaller, although slightly smaller, traffic impact, slightly smaller, uh, uh, impact on cut-through traffic through, uh, the neighbors, the neighborhood, uh, to the east. And so it's, it seems to me that if there, I would love to see us close some gaps, and it was my understanding that when, uh, discussions in the neighborhood, uh, first began about the development of this property, we were talking about two hundred and eighty units. And I heard a couple of neighbors indicate that there was a desire, even if it wasn't a pure conservation subdivision, that we might use the development plan process to, um, create something in the nature of, uh, commitments that would arrive in something in the nature of a conservation subdivision, uh, and that they were willing to, uh, reach to the middle, especially on this issue of unit count, if it, uh, would be, if it served in larger conservation area. So that's the first question. And then the other, I just noted, we just talked about a development that we approved by, uh, a highly divided vote, where we talked about affordable housing. Uh, in that neighborhood, the, uh, contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund Uh, in that neighborhood, the, uh, contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund was about a hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, a unit. I noticed that yours is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a unit. And I was, is there no way where we could at least get up to their minimal figure, which would raise you from forty thousand to about fifty-six thousand? Uh, and then finally, I today, I went out and I met with Ms. Green and we talked about the garden and we and I walked one one more time, just to refresh my memory, uh, about the anxiety, uh, that I had walking that, uh, distance from the community garden to the Merrick Moore School uh, on that, uh, on the verge of Cheek Road. Uh, and it's frightening, and I can't imagine, uh, sending a school kid uh, down that, uh, way, but it's obvious that people do walk there. Uh, there is a little footpath on both sides, uh, but it is very frightening and, uh, the notion that you would have an elementary child walking along there with or without a parent uh, is terrifying, and I appreciate very much your search for a sidewalk solution uh, to that and realize that the engineering problem. Since you and I last spoke, Tim, have you gotten a clear picture from state officials about whether your, uh, engineering solution, which would be a retaining wall, some backfill and a sidewalk built on that, whether or not that they're likely to allow that to happen? So those are my three questions to Mr. Cyvers, and then I have a couple of questions for the neighbors.
Mr. Cyvers?
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Um, so, um, as for affordability and number of units, we also need to keep in mind here that with the fewer number of units, um, is a, um, if you will, contradiction with affordability. Um, by the number of units provided, and yes, we started out at two-hundred-and-eighty, all single-family homes when we first met with the with the neighbors of they, as they've said, and um, I've mentioned as well, um, partially through the project, we changed that to, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty units, which is what our proposal is today. Um, to include a townhome, um, aspect within this, um, to provide that affordability within the development. Um, so, um, so by providing the townhomes, uh, that incorporates the affordability into the design. Um, I mentioned earlier that, you know, the the single families will be starting in the in the mid-two-hundreds, while, um, the townhomes will be starting in the lower-two-hundreds, um, to help bring that affordability into the project. So that was one of the main reasons uh, why we were able to, um, add the townhomes and increase and do a slight increase in the density. Um, as for the donation, um, I do not have, uh, don't have the ability to change that tonight. I will have to speak with the client about that. Um, due to social distancing, we're we're, uh, we're texting back and forth this evening, but, um, we we haven't been able to finalize that. So for right now, um, I'd like to keep the donation as is, but, um, I am aware that that is an item that can change between now and city council. So I will promise that we will take a look at that. Um, and, um, and yes, as you mentioned about the sidewalk, um, you've walked it, um, I mentioned to you when we met, I said, go walk it because I've walked it and I agree with you, uh, which is exactly why we we came up with the commitment that we did. Um, however, the engineering, um, items, um, will be reviewed at site plan and construction documents. We've had minimal conversations, but have had started conversations with, uh, the city engineering, um, about those items. Um, but, uh, but, um, no solutions to those, except for the solution that was in front of you tonight during the presentation.
So thank you. I guess my question is, is it's really not the question about affordability. Uh, affordability is out there, but at this point, uh, for me, uh, and for at least some of the neighbors who spoke, it it's about closing the the difference between you, uh, and unit count is one of the dynamics for that. I'm not asking you to get rid of a townhouse component or to build all, as a matter of fact, I would be against this project, a project of a hundred acres that was monotype, that was all one one type of units. Uh, we did that, we used to do that, and we've created some great neighborhoods that way, but I don't see us doing that again in the future. In other words, but it, uh, still having to mix of townhouse and single-family homes, is there a way to uh, by decreasing the number of units to improve, uh, uh, the overall traffic impact situation and also improve your ability to uh, conserve sensitive, uh, environmentally sensitive land, is there room to move? Uh, and the answer to that is is uh, we are willing to go into a huddle and talk about building fewer units if the neighborhood will come to the to to the middle with us, or no, we can't do that. Uh, but that's the kind of answer I'm looking for there. And the other thing is to, um, I really like the idea that you have put forward with regard to, uh, providing a sidewalk, not just along your frontage on Cheek Road, but getting all the way up to Merrick Moore, and at least for that distance of Cheek Road, providing a sidewalk where none has ever existed and where we already have a safety issue. Uh, I note that from the map that was provided, that the two fatalities, uh, that were noted would be within that length of highway. So, but I would hate to vote for this, hoping that that, uh, that that solution would be approved, only to find out that after the rezoning was allowed and that the development's moving forward, that the authorities with the, uh, with the power to say yes or no to your solution, said no. I would like to, I would like to have a yes before I voted on this. Uh, and but evidently you haven't gotten any clear indication from the the city or the state on whether your proposal, uh, will be allowed by them. And I realize I I I'm not sure that, uh, apart from from that solution, uh, replacing the culvert or extending it, it becomes a great big engineering problem and and that it may even come outside the right-of-way of Cheek Road, and that those become things that that are probably outside your control. Um, so those are my concerns. If I may, Mr. Chairman, could I ask, uh, uh, Ms. Green and Mr. Marion, uh, a question?
You may.
Uh, which means that they'll have to get have things organized so that they may respond. If the developer was willing to negotiate with you on unit numbers and as a as a consequence of that, on on the conservation of more property inside this development, uh, do you think that as a community, uh, as representatives of the community, that you that uh, you could go from the no vote that you've asked for tonight to, uh, a situation where you could ask for a yes vote? In other words, is that, is it, are those changeable areas, places where we could move pieces on the board, uh, and solve this?
And Commissioner Miller, do you want to hear from one of them or both of them?
Oh, both, because they represent different sides of the community, uh, and and I don't expect one to speak for both.
Sure. I think they're both unmuted, so, uh, Ms. Green, Mr. Marion, you're welcome to, uh, offer your response specifically to Commissioner Miller's question.
Sure, yeah, this is Kyle. Can you, oh, sorry, Benita, you can go ahead.
Okay, um, this is Benita Green, and a large part in Merrick Moore community. A large part of our concern is around the safety issue. You know, it's it's the sidewalks, it's the traffic, it's, you know, a whole big issue there, and, um, one of the things that I'll point to is that in the twenty-nineteen traffic study that was done, there was a traffic control device was recommended by the DOT at that Cheek Fuzzet intersection. Because my great concern there is there's gonna be a lot of traffic that's gonna back up to that, um, development, because now, in the twenty-twenty, um, study, they no longer require that traffic control device. And that's concerning, because as you see, we have all sorts of traffic that's coming through here. We have tractor trailers, we have dump trucks, cars, you know, vehicles, tow-in trailers and things. We have all sorts of vehicles that come through here, who travel at different rates of speed. So while, yes, I want to say it would be great to to vote yes on this, just by reducing the traffic from within the neighborhood. Right now, I see that that's, you know, it it's a long, I'm looking at a long-term gain, basically, you know? And while fewer units within the development may for a while and decrease that traffic, over the long term, it's going to be a problem for Cheek Mo- Cheek Road. Once that one-forty-seven connector has been completed, and there are four to five other developments going down east of us on Cheek Road. So I love, I would love the fact of, um, having fewer, lesser density within the community. I would like to let Kyle speak and let me just think on it for a minute.
Thank you. Mr. Marion?
Yeah, thank, yeah, thanks, Bonita, and then, and, uh, thanks, Mr. Miller as well. Um, I, I think channeling a little of what, uh, I feel like I heard from Bonita, um, I've gotta give a giant caveat here in that, you know, w- we're across many different neighborhoods and communicating across people that didn't necessarily know each other before this, so, uh, I am very hesitant to to do anything like speak for anyone else. Uh, I can only give kind of my own personal opinion. Um, so, w- with that giant caveat being said, um, you know, I think I'm of the belief that uh, the hallmark of a great compromise is everyone walks away feeling kind of disappointed. Um, so with that context, um, I think m- me personally, i- if there was room to move on the density and of the conservation area, um, I would say yes, that would give a window where if we could compromise on those points, um, that would at least present an opportunity where I feel like I personally could support this. Um, that said, I I don't want to, uh, you know, th- there are a lot of compelling points being made, especially on the Cheek Road and Merrick Moore uh, front to me, which, you know, i- is less of a personal issue for me and more of something where I can, I'm more just want to support my neighbors who know the issues more personally there. Um, so that's something where in terms of like, uh, what is, what is necessary and appropriate there, I don't want to give a blanket, you know, approval where the only these two things matter, um, because I don't think that's the case. Uh, but in my view, a a lot of the concerns, whether they come down to the walkability of the neighborhood, the streets, the traffic impact, um, the conservation, the environmental impact, they all do kind of boil down to these two giant factors. Um, and I think we're all here with the goal of a compromise and figuring out how to get to a yes. So, uh, with that in mind, I think those are the two levers I would pick to pull, uh, to get there. And I would hope that we could get there if if there's room to move.
Mr. Chairman, that's really all I had, and I appreciate the the, uh, straightforward, sincere answers we got from both sides. I'm still not sure I'm going, how I'm going to vote. I will say that from the last time we saw this, there are a lot of things in this development plan that are are I think really good. Uh, I'm, I have to say that, uh, uh, Mr. Cyvers' careful look at, uh, at the engineering problems associated with that sidewalk is something I really appreciate. Uh, also, the the, what I call the transitional use line, uh, that was drawn inside that red line inside the development plan where, uh, where we're going to put singles, this part, at least some of the single-family home component of the new development up against the existing single-family neighborhood, so that, uh, the existing neighbors won't have a townhouse building immediately next to them. I think that that's a really thoughtful and clever idea for, uh, addressing some of the concerns we heard last time with this case. So that kind of thinking involved here, uh, and as a result of people getting together and talking, I find very rewarding, and I, uh, hate to lose uh, those gains, uh, simply because we have gaps that we could close. And I would love to see those gaps closed, because I believe we have people of goodwill on both sides of this. But we've already delayed it once, and we may have to vote tonight. I'm not sure where we stand on the ninety days, given the confused nature of our schedule. So I'll listen to what the other commission members say and and be persuaded by them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And the staff can correct me if I get it wrong. We continue this from our July meeting, so I believe there's only one cycle, and and we're about to get back on track in terms of meeting just once a month, so, uh, but it's less than a month, so I think it's a pretty limited amount of time. So I I believe we'll be voting this evening. Uh, Commissioner Durkin?
Um, so I'm I'm not gonna raise what everybody else already, uh, went into a lot of detail on on the opponent's side, and I appreciate the time that everybody has spent on this. I do have one question for, uh, Tim Cyvers. Have you heard from any of the business owners along Harvest Street? So I'm moving away from the residential concerns, because I think they've been spoken about at length, but on the industrial uses on the other side of the property of Harvest Street, just curious if you've heard from any of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Durkin. Um, Tim Cyvers, Warvath Associates, yes, I have, uh, I've I've spoken with a few of them. Um, uh, the, most of them, um, the, I think it was either two or three of them, specifically the, uh, developer or the home or property owner, um, at the end of Harvest Street, uh, it's number fourteen on the plan, um, that abuts our property. Um, but all the, everyone I spoke to along Harvest Street was in favor of this development. They had no, uh, no concerns with it.
Okay, I was just concerned, um, just having, moving the residential use closer to the more industrial use. And, uh, just as a concern really of losing that kind of use in Durham, since it's being sort of forced out by residential development and just wanting to keep those uses available where they are. Um, so it's not really a full-fed, led complaint necessarily, just something I wanted to raise. Um, I'm I'm also very much on the fence and leaning towards, uh, no, just given all of the other concerns that were raised, but I just wanted to bring that one. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Durkin. Commissioner Morgan?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Sorry about that, I was looking for the unmute button. You know, I was kind of looking at that, I actually went around that whole neighborhood. It is real, looks like a real challenging area to really develop in that area, and and what, one of the things that it seems to jump out at me is this area has kind of been a buffer between the residential and the, uh, uh, commercial use or industrial use, and, uh, like Commissioner Durkin just brought up, the concern about bringing that closer to each other, and it sounds like adding the connectivity to Cheek Road, all of a sudden, kind of brings that neighborhood in into that industrial realm. So my concern would be is the safety as well with people going through or traffic coming through, and it seems like we keep bumping up against these infrastructure issues with, uh, with, uh, streets or roads that are not set up to handle that type of traffic. So my concern is, uh, I guess it'd be another question to Transportation again, is there any plans for upgrading Cheek Road or doing anything to help improve that flow or to improve, uh, the the potential that, uh, you know, this this neighborhood may bring as far as connectivity?
Erlene Thomas, Transportation. Um, so currently, there are no funded projects, um, planned, but the long-range transportation plan does include a modernization project um, for Cheek Road, but it would still be just two lanes with bicycle lanes and sidewalks. And that project is not currently funded.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, again, it just comes back to looking at the the neighborhood, at the neighborhood certainly uh, in Milan Woods is just, is it's a really nice neighborhood, certainly a lot of, uh, just, a a lot of just, just, uh, really good attributes to it, and opening that up for traffic uh, just seems rather negative to me, as as I could see why the residents are are concerned about the increased traffic and the connectivity to Cheek Road. Um, and I do, uh, appreciate the the developer trying to mitigate some of the different concerns um, as well as some of the, uh, transportation-type things. So anyway, that was just my comments.
Thanks, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks. Um, just wanted to point out some of the things that I like about this project first. The average block block length, that's that's not to exceed seven-hundred feet. Uh, this is something that comes up a lot, something that we need to to incorporate in standards, but, um, a lot of developers have been putting this in, especially Tim. The proximity to to Merrick Moore, the really the proximity to existing areas, existing neighborhoods and transportation corridors, um, to me shows that, um, this is a a property that should that should be developed and that- And that, you know, even though this area doesn't have the connectivity that it should have and the infrastructure isn't where it should be, that from a locational standpoint in proximity to jobs and other things, this is a, this is a relatively appropriate place to be building something. Also the trails, I'm happy to see the commitment for trails, 30% open space higher than normal compared to what we usually see. The stormwater improvements, you know, important and also responded to some of the things that the neighborhoods wanted to see. The front facing gable architectural feature, not quite reaching what I'd like to see, but certainly worth, worth noting. And then of course, you know, the fact that again, because of improved standards over the past months and, and maybe even a year or two, you know, there will be sidewalks on both sides of the street. There will, there will, there will be street trees in the right of way. And so there, there are a number of good things here and also the fact that, you know, Tim worked the neighborhood thanks to the, the hard work and organizing of the neighborhood, the initiative that the, that the neighborhood took. And so that, that's, that's to be applauded. To me, this is, this is another textbook case of low density unsustainable sprawl. Note that this property is, is five times the size of the property that we saw in the first case that we saw today. Very, very large site. It's, it's not a, it's not a, it is a slightly awkward site, but, but it's very large. There's a lot, there's a lot that can be done with it. This, this proposal is, is for a ton of single family detached as well as single family attached. You know, to me, that's, that's a limitation of, of housing options for such a large property. I don't necessarily agree and support that, support the, the idea of there being a lower density. But I do support the idea of protecting the valuable open space that exists in, on the property. And, and to me, that means that, you know, there's an opportunity for additional, additional sort of concentration of the residential units in the form of another type of housing, maybe, maybe lowered in, you know, small scale multifamily or something. Also, just in thinking about enhancing access of Durham residents to, to, you know, small scale walkable commercial employment opportunities that's woven into the fabric of such large sites, you know, there's nothing, nothing here that speaks to that, especially given the scale. To me, there's also sort of a lack of a guarantee, as we saw in the last case, to ensure the buildings front on to centralized true public civic spaces. I love seeing alleys for best practices purposes. Not, not a, not a necessity for me. It doesn't really swing me in one direction or the other, but it is something that I like to see. Also, just that there's no indication again that we're going to be seeing any sort of sustainability and green building requirement, green building standards or green building elements of, of the development. Maybe there will be, but, but we don't, we don't have that secured and that doesn't make me comfortable, especially given, you know, the reality of, of climate change. And then afford, as always, you know, affordable housing. I mean, we can't talk about this issue enough. This is the issue of our, of our city, the issue of our time. And Jesus, I mean, $40,000 for 100 acres. It's just, it's just too bad. It's really, it's really too bad. And, and you know, the reality is that, that we can't demand more. We can't demand more, but, but we can certainly ask for more and hope that developers eventually start doing the right thing. You know, I think some people might say, well, it's something versus nothing, but not me. And I think a lot of my other, a lot of the other commissioners on here would agree with that. So those are my thoughts. I am, I'm going to be voting against this case despite some of the, some of the things that I liked seeing. And we'll hand it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Landfried?
Thank you. I have just a couple of points. I'm also going to be voting no on this. I appreciate the developers addition of the sidewalk to Merrick Moore Elementary. I think that's extremely important, especially given the moving community testimony about a six-year-old child dying on the road. I think it's an important obligation of the planning commission to protect people in our community. And when we allow development, that is large scale sprawling development in an area without pedestrian or bike access, particularly to, particularly to an elementary school, I think we violate that obligation. The sidewalk helps certainly, as does the possibility of access to the elementary school through the neighborhood itself, which I believe would be possible based on the map. But you, it would be very dangerous to get anywhere else aside from the elementary school basically. So I'm not comfortable moving forward given that. And I want to thank Bike Durham for their involvement also and raising some of these important safety issues and the community members who, who've raised them. I take them very seriously. And I also want to point out, you know, that for such a large development, look, you know, that is sprawling, which I'm not inclined to support. I would look to see, you know, what other community benefits are there and weigh those. The development that we looked at earlier tonight and narrowly passed, they were looking at providing $173 per unit to the Affordable Housing Fund, whereas this developer is offering about $90 per unit, based on my rough math. And about, as compared to the prior developer who's offering about $217 per unit to the Durham Public Schools, this developer's clocking in more around 45. So I think we've seen better and we've had close, a close vote just tonight on, on greater community benefits. And so for that reason, I'll, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Armandolia?
Thank you, Chair. I just briefly want to say, you know, I feel like we've been seeing a lot of promising movement lately with a lot of the cases we've seen. And this is another example of where there's a lot to gain, as everyone has said. There's been a lot of improvements made on this particular case since the last time it received the planning commission, which was before my time, but nevertheless I see the improvements. And I think that to me is inspiring because we as Durham are asking for more and we are demanding more. We as a planning commissioner are asking for more. And yet, we still haven't quite got there. And I think that is both unfortunate, but also continues to inspire me because I see the vision of where we are going and what we are asking developers to do and what we want our city and our county to look like. Because of similar comments other commissioners have made tonight, I would be voting no on this proposal. But I look forward to seeing more improvements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Armandolia. Anyone else, commissioners who'd like to speak? You can raise your hand or not. I'll share that I'm in the same boat. I appreciate all the additions here and I wish we were in a position on some other cases that we've had recently where either the community was here saying, we've worked it out, we listened to each other and we, we were being, we, we found that common ground. Or, or the neighborhood was good and they didn't need to come and share any concerns that they had because everything worked out. It pains me because this is the third case in a row that Mr. Cyvers has brought that has a great deal of positive changes. And, and I know he's working hard and, and yet we still are at an impasse where very reasonable community members are making reasonable, raising reasonable concerns. And so, Mr. Cyvers, I hope you keep at it because I do appreciate a lot of the proffers you made, the stormwater proffer tonight. As Mr. White noted, that's the kind of proffer I want to see over and over again. So I hope you will stay with it. And I hope there is time before this moves to city council for, for additional conversations. We are out of time here at the planning commission, so we're going to vote this evening. And I am going to vote no to continue to stand with the multiple community members who spoke this evening. But I do hope that, that this conversation will continue and there may be some opportunities to keep working to find common ground, even though we're in the home stretch at this point. So thanks for hearing my comments. I don't see any other commissioners asking to speak, so this is the appropriate time to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, shall I?
Please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission with regard to case Z1900021, the property at 2720 Fawcett Avenue, I recommend that we send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armandolia, and we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Hey, Commissioner Armandolia?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Chair Busby?
No.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
No.
Commissioner Landfried?
No.
Commissioner Lo?
No.
Commissioner McIver?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
And Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, the motion fails 012.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who stayed with us this evening and offered your feedback on this case. We do have one final item. It's not a case, but I'm going to hand it to Ms. Smith to run the 2020 election of chair and vice chair.
Okay, so it is September. Hard to believe, but it's election time. So, so many elections, okay. We'll start with the nominations for, I will take nominations for the vice chair positions.
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Kinschen. I'd be happy to second that if it's required.
Be great. Any other nominations for vice chair?
I move that we close those nominations.
Seconded.
And I'll take a roll call vote on the nomination. Commissioner Armandolia?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Landfried?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Well, I don't know. Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller?
Yes, certainly.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And I apologize, Vice Chair Kinschen, that I asked you to vote for yourself. I was a little, I just a little nervous late there.
Charity begins at home.
Yes. Okay, so now I will take nominations for the position of chair.
I would like to nominate Chair Busby for chair.
Seconded.
Who's second? Was it Morgan?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I don't have a nomination, but I would like to ask anyone who's nominated two questions.
Okay, go ahead.
For everyone who's nominated, my question is.
Everyone, that's one.
Everyone who's nominated. What, what are your top priorities on the planning commission in light of some of the recent movements that we've been seeing? And the second question is, how will you represent the views coming out of the planning commission, including our views of advancing a just, inclusive and sustainable city? How will you represent those views on JCCPC?
As the only nominee.
I know, I know that that's breaking from tradition because we usually just, but, but I, but I'm just, those are, those are important questions. And, and I think that, you know, obviously I, I support you as, as chair. And I know that you'll be able to answer those, but, but I like the idea of us having a little bit of discussion about the planning commission in general and the leadership on, on the planning commission.
Absolutely. And well, first of all, I would say it, this is absolutely just a group effort and it's harder than ever, at least for me. I'm sure it's for all of you as well, doing this by Zoom. And maybe this is a timely time to ask the question, Nate, because we're finally through the backlog, right? We are now back to meeting monthly. My number one priority personally on the planning commission, and it's frankly why I've stuck with it when it got really hard during these endless Zoom meetings where we were up late and I have lots of other pressing things as all of you do. I want us to finish the comprehensive plan, but to do it in a way that has critical community engagement. We get the equitable engagement right, but that we also do it soon enough that it does happen on schedule. Because as you've noted numerous times, the things that we are getting done are when we're raising the bar on the comp plan and on the UDO and the things that undergird everything we're doing. Every time we raise the bar, then, then we have to deliberate on all the other items. So for me, that's just my number one priority and I want to work with all of you to make that happen. We'll talk about this in a minute, but now that we're through the backlog, I know that the staff believes that they can take on actually starting to schedule, one, just some more updates in our regular meetings, but two, to get back to having our periodic gatherings that we were having off of our meeting schedule to talk about the comp plan and some of the other changes and, and things we want to make. I also would love to figure out, you know, some of the stuff that we do isn't written in stone. So now that we're through the backlog, I'd love to work with all of you to think about, how might we do things differently? You know, we, we don't have to do the public hearings the way we do them. We don't have to start at the time, but we've been starting. So this is a time for us to, to think, rethink how we do things and not just because we might be meeting remotely for some time. This, the engagement of the public is more critical than ever. So anyway, that, from my perspective, that's my priority. And, but I want to hear from all of you and, and my commitment to all of you is that I will work with all of you and we're a team to do this together to try to advance how we do our business and the priorities that we bring to the mix. I'll say on the JCCPC, you know, the thing I, that I can do is I can let you all know when the meetings are coming and let you know when the agenda is up. The challenge, to be frank with all of you, is the agenda is often up a week beforehand. And so I, I don't know what's going to be on the JCCPC's agenda until about a week out. And it's, it's another big packet on top of our regular packet. But that said, I will flag that and I would love to hear from all of you to, to represent the planning commission when, when we have those meetings and to be able to better flag when things are coming. But I'll also work with staff to see if they, if we can get advanced updates about things that might be coming through JCCPC that will then come to us. Because I, I know it's tough when we get stuff and it, and we get told it's been through JCCPC. It sort of has that imprint of approval. And now it's in front of us. It'd be nice to actually have an update somewhere in between as well. So I hope that answered your questions, Nate.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I wanted to throw in that with regard to the, our virtual meetings, I have it on the very highest authority that by the first week of November, we will have a vaccine and we will be able to stop doing it this way.
Not even funny.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I.
We have a motion, we, since I'm presiding over the election, we have a motion by Commissioner. we have a motion by Commissioner Landfried, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Morgan, and it seems that, um, Chair Busby has, um, addressed the questions that were posed.
It was actually the other lawyer with the curly.
Oh, did you make it? I wasn't looking down. Oh, look at that, I was so dark.
You do look a lot alike, but-
No, I was actually looking down and did that by voice, I apologize. But thank you for correcting me. Um, so, motion by Commissioner Durkin and seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Uh, can I get a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Amendolia?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Busby? Oh, never mind, don't vote. Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
Yes.
Commissioner Landfried?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Well, I don't know.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Of course.
And Commissioner Williams?
Absolutely.
Okey dokey. Well, we'll do this again at the same time next year. So, um-
I was gonna say, thank you, looking forward to continuing to working with all of you and Vice Chair Kinschen. And, uh, we, we got some big work to do, but I'm excited that we're through the backlog and we can begin to pivot back towards some proactive work together. Grace, anything more that we need to know today? So next month, we're just back at our regular meeting time, so three weeks from today, and that is our only meeting in October, is that correct?
Right, we have, we are meeting in October, and we're gonna either have, we're gonna most likely have three cases, potentially four. It just, we're trying to firm up some things right now. We've had, uh, so much in the way of, uh, staff changes that we're trying to get our feet back under us and, um, but keep some things moving at the same time. So we'll, we'll see you, uh, on regular schedule in October, that is correct.
Great.
So can you update us on the status of appointments?
Um, as far as I know, they're just being advertised right now, so. Um, I know that, uh, Santi, uh, Commissioner Santiago's appointment may have already been advertised. I do not know that, I need to check with the clerk. I do not believe Commissioner Al Turkz was, or maybe it's getting ready to be cuz he just vacated the seat at the last meeting, so.
And those are both city appointments?
Correct. Um, and then we have, um, we will, seems like we will have, um, and then Commissioner Johnson, did you want to share your news? With the group?
If I didn't, I guess I should go ahead and do it now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought it'd be a good as time as any, so.
Right. But so, uh, I've, I've informed, uh, Grace and the, the department, the planning department, well, through her as well as the Chair and Vice Chair, that at the end of the year, I'll be stepping away from, uh, the commission due to me positioning and preparing to embark and endeavor on some pursuits in twenty twenty-one that will require me to be away from, I'll still be home, will still be Durham and the Triangle area, but I'll be away a lot. And so in, in respect for the position and, and honoring the responsibilities that come with it, I think that it's best for me to see, step aside and let someone else come in and take my place. So at the end of the year, I'll be stepping aside.
I hate that.
I think our resolution's gonna be not cool, but good for you.
All right, so, um, so to answer your question, uh, Commissioner Miller, we have two that are being sought now, and we'll have another vacancy at the end of December that we'll be advertising for, but I will keep you all posted on how those, uh, progress.
All right, thank you very much, Grace.
Of course.
Any, any other business for this evening? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, good night.